Mr. President.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. President, Mr. President.
Ms. Duncan.
Here.
Mr. Guthrie. Uh, Ms. Robertson. Dr. Billups.
Here.
Dr. Joubol.
And a motion to adopt a vote.
Also.
Second.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to, um, include the discussion on the employee agreement, but table the vote until next month so we have more time to, to work on it.
We can't add these to the agenda that I was supposed to do.
It's already in the agenda, so I would need a second for that.
Essentially, she's, it's in the agenda, so she's mainly just saying to table the vote.
What is the agenda?
So shall we wait till we get to that item to table it?
Um.
Yeah.
We can do it. We can. I just don't, we could probably do it either way. I just want to make sure the discussion can still happen.
Yeah.
I could hear you.
Oh.
Could you tell me which one it is?
Yeah, yeah, the, the employee agreement. Okay, um, we had talked about table your vote until next month. We get more time for it. Uh, but I still don't think we have this.
Okay.
So, okay, uh, Mr. Kerserich is a aye. Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Motion passed at five to zero.
And on the agenda, before we go, before we do the pledge of allegiance, I would like to recognize the loss of Eric Schultz.
Yes, you do.
Please stand.
And consider the policy which stands: One nation, under God, in the Israel with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and the business of the morning section, business of welcome speaking agenda and non agenda items, comments or remarks. Please state your name and address prior to making these comments. Please note that members of the board may not discuss items that are specifically identified on the agenda, therefore actually taken, but may be correcting the administration for a further matter, responding to any requests for scheduling the matter for future consideration. Do you have any other comments?
I didn't get any steps.
Okay, thank you. And on to the related items, and we have the governing board meeting. Oh?
I got a proposal.
Yeah, that's a good one. Anybody on the board have anything to read? Okay, you go into the superintendent's.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, administrators and board members, um, sometimes you get criticized for things they think they have to do or they think they've done wrong that wasn't done wrong. So we hate to make mistakes. I apologize to the board. Um, after Monday night meeting, the request was made to, uh, move an executive session to Dr. Board meeting tonight, and I failed to do so. You know what else? Been a busy week is my only excuse. I didn't, I didn't get it done, so my apologies. Um, this week, part of our busyness has been the fact that we've had our annual audit, uh, we've had auditors in this room. We were worried today they're going to get out by the time they had the board meeting. Uh, they left about five o'clock. Uh, we've had audits Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. I'm sorry, Monday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Uh, the report, uh, prior to COVID was due by March 31st to the Audit General's Office, has been postponed to the fall, so I think we'll get it reported sooner. I'd like to get it done this spring. But in talking to the auditors, uh, things look good, uh, so far. Uh, nothing is perfect, and, uh, but the audit looks pretty good, so we bring, uh, so Angelina Venus and our, and our cell you've been busy and I have, because they're the ones doing the daily, daily work. I think we've done a good job. Um, these are very challenging times, um, in our business, and I appreciate, um, the board taking a moment of silence for Eric. I had known Eric since 2005. He came here with a consulting company and helped, uh, kind of gear up our technology, and then we hired him in 2007. He was a professional friend that we always depend on. I'd call Eric on the weekend, let him call in at six o'clock in the morning, and if he's on his way down, he'd pull over and fix, nine times out of ten, he could fix what I asked for on his phone. I don't know how the heck he did that, uh, but he did hand soap. Um, we went to his service last Wednesday in Glendale. Um, it's, uh, it's sad to see something like that. He was a young man. Compared to me, he was a very young man. Um, COVID is continuing to ravage our population. Uh, we've had as high as 15% absenteeism here at school, seventy-one hundred kids, um, depending on the day, uh, with there. We're worried to have, uh, COVID symptoms. We were averaging over two, two staff members, educational staff members out a day with no subs. So Dr. Joubol is spending a lot of time in classrooms, um, and, um, that's, that impacts, impacts us all, so. And one of the downsides of being in a rural and somewhat isolated community is I don't have a lot of time to talk to peers in mind about what's going on in their schools. As I mentioned one time recently, last month, I was at one of our P-Mechs soup meetings, and usually it's a fairly optimistic, um, happy group of people. We all, we all like our jobs. Not there. It was really sad. They've had as high as half their schools quarantined, uh, because of COVID. It's, uh, it's saying there's just, it's hitting them just like it is us when it's magnified over your schools. And, and I think maybe they have more contagion because, because it's sad that everybody is trying to figure things out. There's no given solution. And everything I can read is going to be long-term. Early on, I heard someone from the CDC talking about this could be 25 years. I use smallpox as a, uh, an example. And he said, "Smallpox vaccinations," I hadn't realized this, started about 1950, and smallpox wasn't eradicated in 1966, so, um, I'm afraid my, my kids and my granddaughter are going to be the generation that deals with this. Financially, I get frustrated, as you all know very fast, about money, or the lack thereof. Uh, people ask me what my two biggest worries are about running a district, and I talk about the lack of money and, um, teachers. And if I had a lot of the first, I might go give more of the second. That's not the case. Uh, financially, well, let me back up. About 1982, um, the state developed a new school finance law, and it's the same one we use today, and it is so much better than the previous law. Um, I appreciate the fact that, obviously, the unversed administration, this law was passed. But it's a thing called equalization. For example, in Aho, because, and it's not, when we talk about rich districts and poor districts, we're not talking about the income of citizens. We're talking about the taxable property in that community or in that school district. One of the school districts uses a model, a lawsuit called Roosevelt versus Bishop. Um, Bishop, Diane Bishop, who was a school, state schools in contempt one time. That lawsuit kind of brought about SFB. They used Cartwright District in West Phoenix, uh, as a model. My mother was a teacher there. I lived there. Two houses. It was not a bad neighborhood. Nowadays, it's a little rough, but it was not a bad neighborhood at all. But there was no industry. It was all tract homes. That's very low on the taxable, on the taxable scale. So, um, we don't have a taxable income here, taxable property. That Osborne District does in Phoenix, for example. Osborne District has four schools, four or five schools, and their downtown in Phoenix where the high rocks are. Saddle Mountain, up behind the White Tank Mountains, has the nuclear power plants. A friend of mine was the superintendent there for years, several years. Uh, he took over after a person had run a district over several million dollars in debt. But they have more money than they have students to cause the use of money. So districts like Osborne and Saddleback Mountain, or Saddle Mountain, their money comes to help out students in schools like us who have low tax. Part of the, part of the bill, the law, and this was done well, I got it from the legislature in 1982. There was a lot of cross that aisle work. It was a different political atmosphere than I worry we have today. Part of the, um, the bill said, they put a ceiling on how much debt or, or budget the state can have. The purpose of that is to stop taxes from going up. We will hit that ceiling on or about March 1st. That means the state is going to have to cut 1.2 billion from the budget somehow. That means that the law of Aho is going to lose over $700,000 this year. Now, talking to people that are more hooked up with the legislature than I ever will be, they have talked to people of the party that's in the majority. They were told by one representative or a senator, I can't remember which, "Yeah, we're going to do it. This, this state legislature can vote to override that ceiling." It has, to my knowledge, it hasn't hardly been talked about yet at the legislature. Um, we, if we don't have that vote, we're going to have to adopt another budget in March for the remainder of this fiscal year. That's going to hurt, $700,000. Um, the auditors are telling us we're in very good financial shape. I tend to end a little bit tight with money, especially taxpayer dollars, because it's not my money to spend. Uh, we try to be very cautious on purpose, and that's helped when it comes to tough times like we had last year with buying Chromebooks and things like that. So, um, districts across the state are all going to be in deep trouble. What we fear is that there's going to be a lot of quid pro quo in the legislature to get a majority to supersede that. They call it AEL. I can't think what it stands for now, I'm sorry. Uh, for example, cutting taxes on the super rich. There's a representative named Farnsworth. Farnsworth owns a number of charter schools. He's also a lawyer. He's also in the state legislature. He got a $20 million check a couple of weeks ago because he's picking up tax support of his charter schools. His son is the manager, the bookkeeper of his organization, so his family is becoming wealthy running charter schools. I'm not a fan of charter schools, so please accept my bias, but there are people involved there. They're getting richer, and unfortunately, in my opinion, our kids are going to suffer. What this is going to mean, they don't, I think they will, but I do remiss if I didn't tell you this, that we're worried about. Um, that this could mean layoffs of staff. Uh, it could mean early, in some, some districts, we're talking about ending the school year in March. Uh, I hope, I hope none of that happens. Uh, we're using money right now to tutor kids three days a week because our kids need it. I've talked to several of you about the fact that we had to be, in my opinion, to help keep children safe and healthy, we had to have online education most of last year. But every district I've talked to or read about talks about that topic. I was talking to someone just yesterday who was an educator, and he says, "Like, we've lost this generation." Uh, the kids are having a hard time because they weren't held accountable when doing online work as they are when they were teachers. They don't have, they don't have the expertise of when a teacher's next to them in the classroom to help them and motivate them, so on and so forth, so. That's kind of dismal. Something when I can't sleep at night is kind of back and back in my mind. I hope, I hope that they send you folks aboard later, about three weeks, and say the legislature came through. Um, if you know a legislature, a legislator, um, tell them, tell them you support it right now. I haven't talked to him for about a year, but our legislators for Aho are basically very supportive of the public debt. And, um, I hope that, I hope that continues. Um, there are two bills coming out of the Senate, um, this year that will increase vouchers. Uh, vouchers, as you all know, are tax dollars that go to private schools. Initially, that was sold to the voters or to the, to get the thing passed in Arizona. I don't know about other states. That they were saying that, uh, schools in poor neighborhoods were not good schools. Excuse me, I turned this thing off. Um, I guess I already did. Um, so they were saying, "We're going to send special ed kids." Vouchers are only for special ed kids. What they found in one, the one statistic I read a couple of years ago, um, only about 18 to 20% of the students in the low-income areas were bailing themselves of those vouchers, voucher money. They won't be in the neighborhood. They're comfortable in there. So the money then was going to people who had their children in, uh, two, two expensive, uh, three expensive, uh, private schools in Phoenix are Xavier, uh, Phoenix Country Day, and, um, and, uh, the, the, Rofe, thank you. Uh, so, and in fact, the governor's kids go to those schools. Uh, so I worry that key politicians in our state don't know what it's like to be a student in an interstate school in Tucson or Phoenix, or a rural school like Aho or Higuita and something like that, so. That's going to be, um, harmful. I think it's going to create more of a homogeneous environment, and my belief system about education heterogeneity is important in the learning process, so I'm kind of frustrated. Um, COVID's taken its emotional toll on kids and staff. Uh, the NEA, um, which I was a member for years, uh, did a survey recently. I wanted to read this, so I don't forget it. Um, they talked about, uh, the increase in educators losing, uh, leaving the profession sooner than later, sooner than planning. Um, in January, they did this survey, uh, last month. 90% of the people they surveyed are talking about burnout. Uh, people can say, "Well, teachers don't have a bad deal. They get weekends off. They get most nights off. They only work eight hours a day." As I told the board member one time, I stressed with teachers association, said, "Yeah, we, we do work those hours, and we only work down our 10 months a year, but we get done because it was so good." Now, that was kind of being a little blib, but teachers work hard. I don't see lazy teachers in the Alhod School, and I appreciate their work, and I hope our, I hope our parents do. So 90% are experiencing burnout. 55% of those people say they're going to retire early. As soon as they get out, they're going to get out. Now, um, I don't know what we would do if we were downtown Aho without our international teachers. Um, we have good people. I think they're hard workers. Um, but, um, it's, it would have been ugly here for several years if we hadn't had those people. It looks like it couldn't get worse. Um, we, I talked about, uh, I want to talk about counselors just real briefly. I know a couple of years ago, the board, um, one of my goals was to fly into counseling, and I was lucky to hit it. And the person has been here about a year and a half as well. Now we're using an agency called Southwest Behavioral Health Services, because if you think teachers are rare, business managers and counselors are more so. Um, and we had a gentleman assigned to our school one day a week. Um, I didn't think that was enough coming back from the COVID, so we talked last spring, and I asked, thank you, at least a ton of them. I asked last spring, "Can we double that?" And they, I don't know, "Yeah, we can double that." Our counselor here missed most of the last, I think, semester of six months?
Four, yeah.
At least his fall semester because of severe illness, very severe illness, and has recuperated. He appears to be okay. He's scheduled to be here now, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, so I'm happy for our kids. Uh, obviously, they're not going to stay a counselor unless the parents give permission, but sometimes our kids just need someone to talk to, and, uh, um, sometimes adolescents want to talk about things that they want, not want to talk about to their parents. No offense, currents, because I wouldn't say that my kids got through it. The adolescence was a time and challenge for a lot of us. Um, on, on an upbeat, I got a letter yesterday, and I'm not sure how or why we got this, but we did, the Tucson Optimus Club, which I wish I could become more so. Um, they sent us a check for $1,200, forced to use on a reading program, but I'm writing stuff, so I really appreciate that. Um, and, um, I wanted to talk a little bit. On Monday night's meeting, a statement was made, I wanted to kind of address very briefly. Um, that had the first board member to ask for, um, agenda information about the superintendent of search and research, surgeon, had to hear anything back. Um, Angelina keeps her email great, thoroughly. Um, that was about 1:01 in the afternoon. Um, the questions in that email were answered, uh, at 4:07 and 4:18, so I just thought I wanted the board to think.
Yeah, I think I can respond to something like that because you're speaking about me.
I didn't, I didn't mention anything.
Uh, Mr. President, may I respond to that?
This is the same as the call of the public, right?
I believe you mean inaccurate information about me.
If I am, I'm wrong. I'm sorry, but that's, that's, that's what I can see from twenty minutes. Anyway, long story short, I wanted the board to know that we're trying to communicate with the board.
I don't know if it's, if I go through or not, and he said he didn't specify anything.
But you all know who he's talking about and if information was wrong.
I can lose my report, Mr. President.
No, like I said, honestly, I just don't know.
Okay, okay. That's probably what I'm upset about.
Okay, on the agenda?
I'm, I'm sorry, I feel like I need to clarify. Not wrong about Angelina, she did fine. Wrong about the circumstances alone.
Okay, you have a motion to adopt a subpoena agenda.
Aye, so.
A second.
Mr. Kerserich is a aye. Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Five to zero passes.
And on to the personnel. First item, personnel approval of teacher contracts for the 2022-23 school year. The administration is requesting board approval for the issuance of contracts to be listed teachers. John Abanha, April Calleano, Janet Corre Williams, Olivia Garcia, Carolyn Rodriguez, Amanda Yagam, Sherry Aaronkun, Chad Ginger, Pamela Delacour, Bobby Casey, Jose Luis Nador, Mercy Bericun, Donnell Connelly, Marianna Delantara, Richard Ria Billen, Danny Williams, Matthew Beltran, Veronica Tae, Angela Garcia, Mary Grace Ropé, and Kevin Wolfman.
And, and, Mr. President, so, um, I mentioned this the other night, but a couple of members weren't here. This is not our entire teaching staff right now. The only reason other people are not included, which many wonder about, is because of the visa. Um, because of COVID, uh, J1 visas have automatic three years, and then go for a waiver for five, for two more. Uh, several of our teachers had had a waiver, another waiver for the last two years, so they've been there seven years. And it appears the state department is not going to extend it, so that's why they're not, if, if tomorrow they were extended, it would save Lance and I some, uh, some worries, and, um, we would be glad to recommend those people. That's why it's abbreviated on this.
Okay. Uh, superintendent recommendation, I recommend the approval of the issuance of contracts to be given to individuals for the 2022-23 school year. Do you have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second it.
Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mr. Kerserich is a aye. Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Motion passed at five to zero.
Next item is the approval of classified working agreement agreements for the 2022-23 school year. The administration is requesting board approval for the issuance of working agreements to be listed non-certified staff members. The administrative would be Venus Calerani, Maria López, Candace Moore, Arcelia Woodnose, Angelina Orzuela, Shannon Wolf, Capitaria, Manda Benavides, Sarah Gray, Alejandro Otega, and Fernando Rosorio. In maintenance, Daniel Cotton, James Davis, Rafael Flores Reina, Axel Gonzalez Perez, Richard Russell, Gustavo Yan, Jose Arián. And as pair of pros, we have Lori Daniel, Samuel Hernandez, Bethany Morales, Evelyn Sanchez, Maria Villasilla, Maria Doran, David House, Tristan Woodnose, Sherri Simpson, Alejandro Figueroa, Susana Leon, Priscilla Newberg, Fernand Chaimio, Gloria Gutierrez, Francisco Lopez, Crystal Pacheco, and Kenny Vasquez. And the superintendent's recommendation is to approve the issuance of working agreements to be given to individuals for the 2022-23 school year. Do you have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
And one question for the board. You noticed, I was going to catch up when I was reading them last night, that, uh, Alejandro, uh, Figueroa is listed twice? Who is she? No, I'm sorry.
Oh, should, especially Alejandro Otega.
Yeah, yeah, I got one of these last few weeks.
You're fine. That's the biggest mistake we made, Rodney did very well today. Now, I can just remind the board, it looks like we have two, four, six, eight, uh, maintenance board, actually a short one. Two of those gentlemen, um, are part-time employed. They're basically drivers, part-time writers.
Mr. Kerserich is a aye. Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Motion passed at five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Next personnel item is the administrative resignation of business manager Leanne Burns. Leanne Burns has submitted a letter of resignation effective April 29, 2022. It is the superintendent's recommendation that board approve the resignation of Ms. Robertson as offered school business manager effective April 29, 2022.
I'll second that.
All right, Mr. Kerserich is a aye. Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Motion passed at five to zero.
And then we see administrative employment, business manager Laura Smith. Laura Smith has applied for the position of part-time business manager for the Aho Unified School District. She served as the district business manager from April through July 1st of 2015. It is the superintendent's recommendation that board approve the employment of Laura Smith effective April 1st, 2022 as part-time Aho School's visiting teacher. Do you have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Kerserich is a aye. Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
I have this wonderful question. What, what does that position pay? Uh, about $50,000. And what's the definition, part-time? Uh, half-time. Half-time, so? Basically, half-time. It depends on the day of the year. Uh, right now, for example, um, Leanne was down here two days, so she can say, "Well, I worked two-thirds of the, of the aids." Uh, when Patty was here, she'd be here today. It just depends on the person's level. Typically, they have several small districts they work for, and so we're looking at half-time, basically half-time position.
And as I recall from social Monday, she's one that does not have multiple districts.
She's got, she, she had, um, analog, and as I've said, board, a couple of individuals, at least, I think, um, it's harder to find business managers, I think, and his principles are super tense, because we're all teachers, and there's more teachers than our business people. And so after I talked to her and told her it was going to be on the agenda, she said three more job offers. So it's, we need people like this, so I appreciate that.
Is there, is that $50,000 for half-time? So if she worked all the time, it would be over $100,000? That's pretty good.
Yep. Thank you very much.
So, I'm sorry, I should, but, so this employee is a part-time employee, so we just don't have the job load for a full-time employee?
Correct. The way the budget works, twenty percent of my time is on business as well, and so I kind of pick up some slack. And that's been, we've been doing that since two thousand, two thousand and three, four.
She's an independent contractor, or she's?
Independent.
So we don't provide any benefits?
We have to pay income tax, all that kind of stuff. She doesn't get insurance benefits or anything.
So she's basically required to work twenty hours a week, is that?
And ninety percent of what she does is online, which, one of the things she and I talked about, she said, I'll be down in Aho at least once in the show, because she plans on being here for a board meeting. I would assume this board meeting, we have something she must explain before we be here for this day's session. For example, one of the things I'm nervous about, there's a whole list right now, but one of the things I'm nervous about, that's why I mentioned on this budget, potential budget thing. That budget has to be adopted just before the transition, so right now it would be Miss Burns, because she would have to do it next month. And so, and that's one of the reasons, and I'm glad someone can point it out, that I had, I had an incongruity on the start dates. I wanted both board members, board governors, I'm sorry, both business managers on board the same month, because I want Ms. Smith to do the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. She says the budget she's gonna live with, she's gonna make work. And Leanne, Miss Burns will be exiting, and so you'll see a change in her letter. She comments that I asked her to change her resignation from June thirty to end of April, and that's why, and she agreed. And so, Ms. Smith.
I certainly never have a problem with, I don't know, you guys fill a lot of it, but I don't see why she has to drive Aho. Well, we can do stuff on nowadays.
Sometimes she'll do a lot of stuff online with a remote desktop. She can be on the same screen we're on, or the Venus, or Arcelia. I think partly she just thinks it shows that she respects the district, and she wants to support the people that are working here, and that makes them feel, I'll be able to support as well.
How much did we pay Leanne?
We paid Leanne, well, we paid Leanne about, originally I offered, she said, I only want forty thousand dollars. I said, no, we've got a big job. Leanne came in when we had, you recall we had an audit, it didn't look pretty. And I said, no, you're gonna do some work to clean things up. So I said, I want you to take at least forty-five. Well, there's been some things, she goes, I'm not gonna do that, I'm not gonna do that, I'm not gonna do that. So we have to bring in other business people, so we're probably paying another fifteen thousand outside of her with individuals for tasks that have to be done for the other generals. So the cost right now is probably around sixty thousand, plus Venus, Arcelia, and twenty percent of myself.
So this lady's gonna do all those tasks?
She says she can do it. For example, we're paying a lady, and I'm, she's really sharp, and I don't know her, I met her, we, I talked on the phone, she's doing all her title grants and stuff. She's a business manager of a large district. And, but Ms. Smith and I talked about, she goes, I don't wanna write the educational part of it, like her Title One, for example. She goes, I don't wanna write the educational part, because I'm not educated, I'm a business person, and she said, you guys write the educational part, because we have no problem doing that, and she'll run how we spend the money and so on and so forth, keep account, keep an account of that. So it worked out. We did that when she was here before, and then she was the one person, and she was the front at that time. We brought her on board when Patty Spencer passed away.
And Jermaine's in this situation, but I don't know, she told you, our fixed asset person was here, who does all of our inventory, like every single little piece of whatever, she just got a job offer for a business manager position, tell us some. So she's gonna try to still be our fixed asset person, and our capital asset person, and be the business manager, because she doesn't wanna leave the time dry. But that's a huge job. Like, she comes on fall break in spring break, and crawls through every space you would find with her little, and that's another person that would be a business manager that was a full-time position. It's all in together.
Yeah, we gotta go, somebody?
So, we're, Mr. Guthrie?
Yep.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan?
Can't hear you.
Yes or no?
Yes.
All right. Motion to pass this by. Thank you very much.
You have to speak up, because we're a lot.
Okay, next personnel items, extra pay and position employment for spring sports of twenty-two. Individuals who have expressed an interest in coaching for the twenty-twenty-three spring sports season. Jose Ariyan is head basketball coach. Lonnie Alvarez is co-head softball coach. Kaila Leon is co-head softball coach. And Angelina Valenzuela is assistant volunteer. Do you have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll say. Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Cruz, which is a aye. Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Motion to pass this by to zero.
Any other business items? First business item is the approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar. The twenty-two, twenty-three Aho schools education calendar has been proposed and reviewed. This calendar needs the minimum instructional days, one hundred and eighty, including all state and federal holidays. And then you had mentioned yesterday that the teachers did approve the date change, the, is that about my date?
For the April holiday?
Yes.
Is that, oh, okay.
The board, Lance and I have the teachers, I think, today, let me have the teachers today. And we had eighth grade promotion on the twenty-third of May, and high school graduation twenty-fourth of May, two thousand and twenty-three. The teachers agreed to move eighth grade promotion to Wednesday, ninth, twenty-fourth, and twelfth, high school graduation to the twenty-fifth, and then that frees up one day. So take April seventh, which happens to be Good Friday off, as a, as a, just a day off, because that's only Monday, that's a three-day weekend, yes.
I printed it, but I, I think that I didn't print it. So that takes this day off, this day on the fifteenth, for that April holiday, and these two days move over, and I have this extra day here. So with all of them, you have eighteen, so your eighth grade promotion will actually just have to change.
I was just thinking, the last day of the teachers, moves to the twenty-sixth, that Friday?
Does it push to the twenty-sixth, or does it stay to the sixth?
Yeah, they would, the teachers' last day would be the twenty-sixth.
That's actually the whole.
That would be the same number of contract days as they have in the current year that way.
Do you have a motion on that?
So, we're, we're gonna make the motion with the, with the suggested changes, okay?
Yeah.
So, I would like to make a motion to approve the adjusted calendar adding the extra holiday and fifty minutes.
And I will second.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Do you have a chance for a conversation?
Yeah, sure.
And I just wanna bring this up, and I've had it explained to me like nine times why we do it this way, but, and, and that's probably the way it should be, but, I've always wondered, and superintendent, Dr. Gill explained it to me several times, so has Daniel Prowlis, but, to me, the, the teacher's workday should be on Fridays, because there's so many ballgames in all the sports on Fridays, and the kids leave to go out of town on Fridays, so they have Wednesday afternoons off, and then they're gone on Fridays, and I've always wondered why we don't have Fridays for the teachers. But what I've been told, and Dr. Gill explained this again, is that when you do that, then kids will come to school on Fridays, their parents take the, the whole day Friday and make it three-day weekend all the time, and so they have trouble with attendance, but, just.
The same thing, same thing happens sometime with teachers. Not that teachers are present tonight, but, did I say that well, Liz?
Yeah.
I got lucky. But sometimes it's, three-day weekend is a real nice opportunity to go to Rocky Collier, or go to the mountains. And so Wednesday's not as, not as.
So my concern, be like, during baseball season, your girls and your boys all have a ballgame on Friday out of town, and so you have, what, thirty kids that are, that are leaving to go to a ballgame, and so I can't believe people are doing a whole lot in the classroom that day with that many kids. Wrong, I could be wrong. And, but, so that's just the only concern I have, especially the coach, where maybe you wanna leave a little earlier, but you can't leave until, you know, later, because, and on a Friday, because we're trying to get into school day, get the kids there longer. So, I didn't, I wanted to bring that up sooner or later, I just didn't have a place to bring that up at.
That's the same question before on that one also, because I always thought the Friday, then the second day was of kids or, yeah, staff, and this, off, take your Friday off. So they're doing the half-day leave, half-time vacation.
It seems like the Wednesday early release of comment, that is correct. Are you aware of schools that have, or, Dr. Lance, are you aware of schools that have Friday early release?
My own district did, and they were correct. Before, there was a shortage on staff. Because they had fifteen schools, and seven were teachers, but, it's really tempting.
Now, what you're saying is that we're surrounded by the COVID, the kind of falls, the four-day school week. In the state of Texas, it's, it's, it's being swept with district switching before this. And one of the, one of the small benefits of this travel for athletics, and they also do things, they also have clubs that travel, their chess clubs, debate, things like that, on the travel. But we can start to see athletic U of M next year, more and more of our state, whether we're there.
Healdland is a four-day.
So longer school year.
Yes.
And my concern is that you go to.
Longer school day.
Longer school year. I've seen schools where they basically had a couple hours on the, the school day, and that takes care of the hours.
Aho did that in nineteen ninety-six and ninety-seven, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-six, ninety-seven, first year as a business manager. But what was done wrong here, in my opinion, I had nothing to do with that part, was at that time, the state mandate for instructional time was based on days, not hours, downs on hours. And seventh and eighth grade was like, two or three more hours per month, a week, than other grades. So the kids, elementary kids got out, say, two-thirty, high school kids got out at three-thirty, seventh, eighth grade kids were here till almost five o'clock. So they and their teachers were leaving, all our else was gone, they looked like they were dragging on the door. And I, the board at that time didn't extend that, because the community didn't support it. They thought that, that is something you gotta bring back to the community again sometime.
Or compared to stodio care.
Exactly. Plus, they just saw it as a day where school, school employees didn't have to work. And it worked for me, but that's not what we exist for. I was living in the valley, in an apartment here. I could go home and do all the yard work on Saturday or Friday, and see my wife and kids, I'll be there. But it wasn't, I had made this best thing for kids at that time, the way of structure. I think we can structure it better now. The law didn't allow it, like, so.
I'm sure that us, and including other districts, are really looking at it now with offline classes, online classes, people not coming to school anymore. Now, I'm sure Lance is probably, knowing last, he probably thought ahead of this, and, you know, it may be something that they would consider, but I would hate to task a teacher today anymore, especially like a four-day workday, being here at six, seven in the morning till five, six in the evening, that's just no way.
It doesn't, it doesn't have as many minutes each of the days that, that the, so, they
almost throw us across, I saw a school, we do thirty minutes per minute a day, nine four, and then go throughout the year. It wasn't that much longer, that many more days were out. The big benefit that, that I see is a teacher recruitment. You know, you get younger teachers in, and they know that they can go to the city for, for a three-day weekend, then it's easier, easier to get them out here to share a house, and that sort of thing. At least, in other world, they're, you know, that would be okay, so.
Yeah, the point of, you have fewer instructional days per week, that's one less day you have to worry about fucking subsport.
Or transportation, or electricity. See, that was what a lot of people, they're saving bus miles. Well, here, it wasn't a factor, because we don't make the minimum on bus miles, so we're getting paid, we're getting paid, it can't go lower than what we're getting paid for transportation. Just, now, if we, if we took our bus to Healdland, like, after we got kids in, we could pay the extra money, but we have true no cost of transportation.
Yeah, and this is a valuable discussion, but we can't change everybody here, and we're waiting on nobody else.
Maybe next year.
Yeah. Okay. And Mr. Guthrie, we are here. For a yes or no?
Yes.
All right. And Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Motion to pass this by to zero.
Next business item is approval of out-of-state student field trip, but it's STEM club. STEM club is asking permission to travel out-of-state for a May twenty-twenty-two field trip to Disneyland and California. Students will use tax credit donations from East End and aerospace club for this trip. Mr. Chigi will give us a report on the Monday study session due, which means we will.
I'm unable to hear that.
It is recommended by the superintendent that the board approves the proposal, the proposed student out-of-state trip.
So, and then we're getting Monday, and that part that probably got brought up, and I mentioned, Dr. Gill, my only reservation would be, is that the people that donated to this, probably didn't donate for a trip to Disneyland, they donated for the program.
It was Friday.
Yeah, we just brought up, Monday, you guys said that, because they're gonna do aerospace stuff while they're out there, that, correct?
We had a discussion with, with Mr. Chigi about coming in after the trip to go report on what they did, and having a couple of the students come in and talk about the science that, I don't know if he was doing math, that they were working with, that they, he, he said he was gonna do, basically, almost a scavenger, and they're gonna find different things that, like hydraulics, and how they work, and he was gonna have them talking with the people operating the guys on the, the science and engineering involved in the drives. But yeah, that concern was, was brought up, because it could easily look like, oh, we're just looking to go have fun at Disneyland. But I know, when I dropped that physics class, the amusement park in North Carolina had a science day, in fact, just all science classes could go, so we took the physics class there. Sadly, they didn't have any real program set up. They had it set up on Sunday, but me and the teacher I was with made sure that there was educational background too. I had, I had no doubt that Mr. Chigi will also stretch the.
I'm sure a lot more kids will join STEM club next year.
I think that's part of the motivation. We've got a good senior class membership there, and we'd like to have that continue next year.
So, I think all of us that were present had that same concern. Why, can we, can we add something into the motion that says, approved under the condition that there's a lesson, or, I don't know what it would be called?
Educational, educationally.
Educational plan, and, and a report.
Yes. I believe that would be up in the first, you did the motion, to the next motion.
Wait, 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 can I add one other thing to add? Also, you, Rodney brought up a really good idea, or not a good idea, but a point, that the lot of driving for one day.
Were they in direct, that, that's the same?
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, and I.
He sleeps in between.
Yeah, I asked him that, and he addressed it last night. Since he has so many chaperones, he's actually gonna go back to the van for a couple hours and sleep with the other teachers.
Were they taking the small bus?
They get a light bus.
And he has another teacher going, he said he was too tired, that that teacher would be able to switch out and drive for him as well.
So I would like to improve that condition as well, with our, our chaperones to, to manage that, our, our provision and.
So, so when you say chaperones, imagine that chaperone, non-school employee can't drive that bus, can they?
Where are the teachers?
So they have these staff.
So pretty much we're gonna have one certified staffer, with the students while.
The chaperone, there's one set of parents going in their own vehicle, but the chaperones on the bus are certified teachers.
They have a date due, maybe.
We also discussed that perhaps he could put something in the copper news that would explain using tax credit money at what.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we did that also to alleviate that concern from the community, feminist hearing.
And we wait till after the trip, they're gonna be willing, they boast the money, and we can have a chat, talk about it. But if you get it in the paper ahead of time. But if you get it in the paper ahead of time.
Then they know what's coming.
They know.
So may I repeat what I think you just said, there's a combination. Improved, what I'm hearing is the board would approve this based on having an educational experience at Disneyland with students, having a second driver, and number three, having a board report on return.
And Marcia also mentioned having something in advance before they go, so people know what's happening.
So it's like a public location.
Yeah. It seems a little, almost human interest article. Maybe a picture of the stadium, so maybe we can find what we're doing.
Does that have a prospective date yet for it?
I think it's Thursday coming. One of the things that he's working on, I think I mentioned a line before the meeting, he's going to be doing a lot of drone work after spring break. And I would love to take pictures, some pictures of kids involved in that, because there's a very future in that. I think that'd be appropriate time when we talk about that, to get the copper news over.
Okay, then, I want to make this motion with the recommendations of additional experience, additional driver, the board report from the students that they need to give to the board after the trip, and public notification of said trip. And how, what they'll be experiencing. Yes, prior. Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Chris, which is a aye. Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins? Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Motion passes by two zero.
Next item of business is the approval of the A U S D gifted scope and sequence. State statute requires that the local government's board approve a scope and sequence for gifted students every five years. It was the superintendent's recommendation that we approve the attached twenty-two gifted scope and sequence. And then I have a motion.
Make motion.
I'll second it.
Yeah, I have a couple comments, questions. So I understand, I'm just looking at what the, what we're doing for the gifted students, what's in the plan. And one thing that's listed is A P I B classes.
We have no, we have no A P I B classes.
I'm sorry, that was one of the things you have to think about, I was just. Okay, so, okay.
Only time we've had A B classes, dance placement classes, just when Brian McKinsey was the principal, and he had a master's degree in history, he taught me the class.
Would it be, now we have the full enrollment A C S O C courses, is that something that?
It's the teachers who qualify. I believe they require a master's degree in the content, not just, and many teachers have a master's degree in education, and I believe it's almost like Tachian in Community College. You have to have a master's in the content.
Well, you know, multiple teachers' classes, you can actually get college credit for it.
Okay, so, and then also, you said on Monday that we weren't doing pullouts, but we do have pullouts listed for K three two, and and K one and two, and then, and then three through six students as well, pullouts are listed.
I would not recommend pullout, number one, we don't have pullout, we don't have a teacher. Number two, I think, the older, as I mentioned Monday, the older the children get, the less, more social problems pullout system creates for them. It's not every kid, but a lot of kids, and so I think there's value in them saying what their age appears for everything. And we depend on teacher differentiation, construction.
Okay, so we're not, we're not doing that?
Correct.
So those two pullouts shouldn't be in there either? Is that correct? They shouldn't be listed in there?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's correct. And then the last one is self-contained clauses for gifted students. We're not doing that either?
No, no.
Okay, so that's listed under K three two and three through six. Okay. Okay, so those, so those two.
And for numbers that weren't present, as a young principal, but as an old principal. In my previous district, we pulled out kids, we did one day a week or one day for two weeks. And with K three kids, it was okay. But starting with middle grades and definitely by junior high, we saw some social issues, associations in certain ways. The kids are thinking or they're acting like they were smarter than you, but I didn't go to get the reinforcements. Or the other kids didn't get to go, make light of the fact, we think we're better than we are type of them. They created more problems, I think, than helped the child.
We can have the motion.
Seconded. Mr. Guthrie?
If the withdrawals.
Yeah, so I would like to make a motion that it be approved with those three types of plus the A P I B and the self-contained clause.
I thought that was already out, but yes, I agree.
I understand though, it's the person who made the motion is the one who changed the motion, is that correct?
I changed the motion, I agree.
Okay, so you.
So then Marcia, you're good with that as a second, or?
I was, I did go along with the second.
Oh, he was asking with the changes?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Chris, which is also a aye, motion passes by two zero.
Next item of business is the approval of the certified working conditions agreement update. The proposed certified working conditions agreement to start February twenty twenty-two to June twenty twenty-three. And I will make the motion to table the vote on this until March.
Table the vote, we'll still have the discussion.
We still have discussion tonight.
I'll second that. So I have, I did the chance to go through this, and I came up with some questions that I hope will clarify some of the.
You had some questions last Monday about, now we're making the decision. I didn't know that I thought they had talked about different things, but you can tell in page, and there's a.
Just that one. So nice that pages aren't numbered.
You have to learn the heading number a little bit.
Sure, so certified personnel policies, it's B one E.
Okay. That's two professional days.
That says professional days are submitted at least one week prior. And then the one that professional days.
There's something on leave days also.
Can anyone find the professional day apart? Can anyone find the professional day apart? Thank you. I think I'm missing a page. Anyway, so it says for professional days, I believe it, it says four weeks instead of one week. I don't. That's okay, I mean, that's, yeah, so that was, those were those two.
There was also a couple of days that I saw on Ms. Robertson's.
I think, I think this one here should say personal days, not, because the, the teachers have so many pick days and have so many personal days, but two, two personal days, and then they have so many.
I mean, okay, you're right, yeah.
So I think instead of professional, this was a typo, this should say personal days. So, and the other is professional.
But I don't know if that's anything that I can read.
That is, um. E.
Yeah, the B one B, right after the, you're just going to, oh, the different positions.
Okay. It should, it should be personal days. Because when we changed the policy last year, there's the two personal days and then so many pickly days for certified teachers. So instead of professional days where they're going to a workshop or a thing, this should say personal days, not professional days. So that's where the caveat is. I, I think so. I'm not as far as.
So you're in section, yeah, I can't, in section B, what number is that ending in?
Oh, it's C one E.
It's page two. Halfway down or almost to the end.
Oh, I see, that's the end, I'm here.
And then, you can't see it on your book, but over on the left-hand side, when I said for professional, you go back to professional leave. Here, that's where professional leave, it doesn't count against their leave they have heard. Those are, it's like reasonable kind of, they can go, it's the district that's been due. It won't count against their personal leave. So I think the day before this, it's supposed to be personal, not professional, number two. Yeah, that's a, that's a typo.
Okay.
So I can change that right now.
That's my answer. Okay, so, um. The, let's see, on that same page where it says, and I have a bunch of questions, and I hope, I hope we can get through them pretty quickly. Some of them probably will, you know, bear a little bit of discussion. But I hope, I hope I can get these answered without taking too much time, so.
Is this because we, haven't we put out a motion to table it?
Just the vote, not the discussion.
So on that.
And we table, discuss it when we table it, and then in regular discussion time?
Well, we're kind of in that right now, because we're going to discuss.
Well, then, then the table doesn't work.
You table the vote, you table the vote, not the whole discussion.
Actually, this works out because it's, I continue before the next meeting, I don't have to wait for changes.
So for a lot of, a lot of these, they probably don't need changes, they're just things that I think are being more clear, or at least I didn't understand. So on that same page, it's one, B one E, or it says reasonable requests for absence from school capacity will be considered.
Did we discuss that same one last year?
Yeah, so that's what I, you know, that's what I'm going to ask, so.
You have a thirteen professional leaves?
Pardon?
You have a thirteen. No, I have a back on the B one A on the second page.
Yeah.
P two.
Certified personnel policies, B one.
B one, right.
D.
B one D.
Right, yeah. So, and my question about that one is, so did that apply to leave?
It applies. No, that applies to just if someone wants to leave, cameras are around here and they're going to be lunch or something. And that's the way I've interpreted since I.
It's silly to spend all the time on that, I mean, we could vote.
So.
Good, but we're also discussing things that might be, go back to the committee that approved it. And they don't want to put that up until March and then have to throw it off again. Now, they don't want to keep constantly dealing with the.
But you example, if this document doesn't mean policy, we shouldn't be ratifying it. So if we see anything that, hey, you just need to go back, you need to fix this, it's not the board's responsibility to fix this. It's maybe to make life, the administration can say, hey, this is the problem with it. The staff needs to figure that out to make sure it means policy. Because this comes to us, and I know we discussed this last year, I know Lonnie brought it up also. This doesn't follow policy, we shouldn't be approving it, not waiting for after the fact. That's why we discussed with Dr. Dooley beginning of the year, to have them start working on it then, so they can have it all hashed out, figured out. So when it comes to us, you know, we're just very good about catching these.
I don't argue that at all, Eric. I agree with that. But we have time scheduled for discussion. That's why we have a Monday meeting, so we can discuss.
But we're not, we're just kept to discussions on Monday. We also have them on Wednesdays at P P.
I don't remember having voted for that.
Now, did March, we're not actually having a regular study session, because we're having the candidate review of the superintendent's search, so.
I haven't heard about that either.
That was discussed last month's meeting, when Dr. Dooley was here, when we were setting up the dates for the review. Because that's the day he was going to come to us with the pool of applicants paperwork.
The one, the one.
And we decided to have, we decided to have just the one meeting. And it'll be a long one, and that's sometimes we're going to have long meetings.
Well, then we should schedule the Monday ones where we can discuss.
There was other scheduling issues, we couldn't have one, it was there to do it on that Wednesday. That.
I don't think we're wasting time just to do this.
I don't think we're ever wasting time in a meeting. I mean, yes, sometimes these meetings might go a little while, and I understand, Marcia, but I think it's best if we just brought up these small items here, figured it out, that we can, Dr. Dooley can take it back to the staff, they can fix it, and they can then, March, okay, we fixed it, it's here, it's done, then we can approve it.
If we don't do it now, then it winds up, we're doing that in March.
How's getting it back to there?
Well, I'm for, I'm for having it taken.
So when does the other one expire?
But I.
When does the, the school year, correct? June thirty-one or whatever.
We started working on this.
I think we need to table something that includes all the discussion and everything else.
So the one that we are moving the world, I think, right now expires, we're both supposed to have another inspection.
So this one will take July first.
Maybe I can.
Well, it's written.
We'd like to take effect, because there's some changes that the board wants to see. We're going to say take effect after the date it said this meeting, but we can both put it to March.
So we like March ten, March ten, until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
The teachers, one of the things they, they wanted to have and brought to closure, and not revisit, you know, doing more than manual basis.
Okay, so the next one I have is, okay, did we go back to the B legal request, we're not doing anything with that? No, I don't, I don't know that, maybe there'll be some things that you notice, but these are mostly questions that I've had, having been through this quite a bit. So the next one is B three, next page.
I'm just sorry, I don't. Uh, okay, the first page.
Turn the next page, it goes to release.
The title page, and you know the next page, the first one, so we're on the second page of actually the document itself. Number three on that page, release.
Cafeteria supervision.
Yeah, it's still under the certified personnel policy, this one. Number three, correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
The next question.
Yeah, so it says, teachers will have a minimum of uninterrupted thirty-minute duty-free lunch period. They can, I'm clarifying, they can eat lunch in our caf, in the cafeteria, and if they eat lunch in the cafeteria, they will assist in supervision of students and intervene, stop inappropriate behavior. And then we have something new added that says supervision may be covered using one certified teacher and, and an additional parent. So can you just explain how that works?
It's, I've seen schools do it, but I don't think it's safe. I think it's important when you have supervision of students on the playground, especially if you have certified teachers there. Instead of having two certified teachers, we talked about if you have one parent with a certified teacher. I'm, I'll pretend like I'm a judge. If a child, if there's a serious accident on the playground, child's hurt, parents sue the district. It's hard for school personnel to answer questions. When you have a class of twenty-five, you have a teacher. So you have two hundred kids, a hundred kids on the playground, and you have your own teacher out there. It's hard to explain, can't defend it. So I think it's always a way to have a teacher. Now, we have the intent, and we try hard to have a thirty-minute duty-free lunch hour. That does not always happen, because occasionally, we have weather situations, or we have a shortage of staff.
we have weather situations or we have a shortage of staff. But for the bigger school, I had the privilege of having enough special area teachers, non-home room teachers. I gave them part of their day, they had one, one period of duty every day during lunch hour. They would be on the playground, in the cafeteria or something else, at least. Well, here we don't have that privilege, so that freed up, this is the home room teachers to do before school, after school, and recess. So now we have, with our lunch period, we have to have a teacher out there, so Lance is magic, kind of jumbles up what's gonna happen, dude, he's out there a lot, Casey's out there a lot. And I have time, I'm cruising, I try to go in the cafeteria a couple times a week just to see how things are going. Plus, it's, I enjoy it, I like seeing the kids, so I can help out, but it can't be relying on them because they may have other.
So, so these supervising, um, certified teachers and parapros are not on their lunch period?
They're in their regular break. And it's much easier to give the parapro a lunch period break than his teacher. Now, it's still a challenge. Because if they're a one-on-one aide and they're supervising the, the fourth graders in the cafeteria, helping supervise the fourth graders. It's, it's tough to find them a lunch period that's not with the fourth grade, so someone has to cover the one-on-one person, so this thing, it is very, it is very convoluted. Um. I think, I think all of our parapros right now are one-on-one parapros. We have more one-on-one parapros right now in this school this size, and I had a school with a thousand kids. Um, we have some more serious needs, autism is continuing to grow. Um, depending on whether the child is on the spectrum, they may need, uh, a one-on-one person to help keep them safe. So it's definitely, it's hard to do.
So the fourth grade goes in the cafeteria?
Pardon me?
The fourth grade goes in the cafeteria with a teacher and a parapro. And so then they all leave the cafeteria at the same time and go to the playground?
Yes, typically. That's why I understand, what you say.
Yeah, okay, so.
The cafeteria staff will release them, okay, fourth graders can go. And we've just recently started using the playground, we bought equipment for two years ago, and it's, in my opinion, it's safer, it's bigger space, they're not running around between wing three and the, and the gym, that's nothing to do with this, but the kids seem being directed, and Lance has ordered a bunch of toys, basketballs, tetherballs.
And the softball field?
Yes.
And the reason for that, that was like five or six years ago, that teacher's no longer on the staff, would go into the cafeteria and eat, and there would be people running around fighting. And that person would say, oh, no, no, I'm free. And, uh.
That doesn't work, we can't, there used to be in this agreement when I came on board, if you did, if you went to the cafeteria to eat, you got free lunch. And do that, that was a federal lunch program. So we had, and it took this, and the team, the teacher team that I was working with, we took that, we took that off about ten years ago, Patty was still alive.
That wasn't hard to get around.
People, yeah, people understood that, they were, everybody wants a free meal, but they were not, it wasn't a challenge. But that's the thing.
So it says mainly, but, so it's not, it's not necessarily going to happen.
Correct. If I get those in there, probably the cafeteria has the risk of at least certified persons, the safer area, it's confined, when Robert was the cafeteria manager, um, he could be very friendly, he also had a deep voice. And, um, there was no screwing around. And, um, I, I've been there every day, but a long shot, but times I've been there this year, in the last few, few weeks, I haven't seen I haven't seen these people, any, any poor behaviors, but. Now, real, real quick, um, so the things we approved, school calendar also is reflective of here, so we're not, see, correct, two separate ones again.
Correct.
This calendar, when the board approves and prove, we'll go to the state, we have to send to the state, A to E to home.
Yes, yes, I, we have to, either Casey or I were submitted before the end of March, be March fifteenth or September.
Uh, so the next one I have is E, I'm sorry, it's fine, A, hospitalizations and medical life insurance. Um, and uh, it says if insurance benefits are available to employees, dependents, all dependents will be listed with the health household. If insurance benefits are available to employees. But what is it?
If they don't work, if they don't work twenty hours a week, they don't get benefits.
I see, so only summer, so like, if eligible.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's. That's related to their employer.
So, so the next paragraph says, if insurance benefits are available to employee dependents, the coverage will be the same for employees, same thing.
We also had an employee who wanted to not have themselves, but have their dependents. But we had to say, you have to have yourself and your dependents, your dependents are in a package of yourself. So it, it doesn't have to be the other way, you can't have medical insurance for yourself and your dependents, to have to be like together thing. It's like people have having a phone line and, and intermed on.
Uh, so same section, uh, D where it says, uh, the Ottawa Unified School District will pay a minimum of two thousand five hundred and fifty-six. Um. It says, let's see. Okay, the balance of the medical insurance may be, may be paid from three oh one monies if the staff possesses this to the board and the board approves it, so how does that work? The staff.
We have three buckets of money for three oh one.
I most, I, I, I know that, I, my, my question is, how does the staff present it to the board?
Yeah, the staff has to, I, I think it's eighty-five percent, the staff has to approve the three oh one plan, whatever it is.
I see, so on approval of.
Yeah. Let me, let me explain, you didn't add, let me explain that twenty-five fifty-six, that's a, that's a weird number. That was the cost of premiums for a year in two thousand two. And we always have it there saying we want to guarantee, because the board at that time wanted to guarantee that amount of payment. There have been one time since then that we were broke, so broke is the point, we couldn't do it. And, um we found some, it was during President Obama's administration, and he had, um the, the administration created some funds. About the same time we got the school approval draft, and so we started the year with insuring employees, full-time employees at twenty-five hundred and fifty-six dollars. Now, insurance, I think it's around six thousand dollars.
Almost seven.
And what was sad, we found out that some of our full-time employees are only getting twenty-five hundred and fifty-six uh, dollars to buy insurance, they couldn't afford to pay the rest of it. So, um, Patty and I worked, Patty found money, some Obama money, that we could, we had enough federal money, we can shoot through eighteen weeks, if I recall. So that only had another nine weeks, so we thought it was very, very unfortunate, we had an employee working full-time, and that job, I thought, had some hazards to it. And we couldn't help, sure, we, pardon me. By doing that, that period of time, we signed, we traded teams, we got enough leverage to be prepared to the rest of the year, so we've never had to do that since. Now. I hope, I hope twenty-five times thousand times, but May, March first doesn't happen, like I explained there in my report, because that's gonna hurt us big time. Uh, and obviously you folks should be involved, potentially we could have a special meeting between now and March first, not just shoot and answer, talk about that if the legislature comes through. So would you both know something?
So, uh, number six, reassignment of certified personnel responsibility. Um, section C.
Section C.
C, I think that's. Um, it says. So this is about, um, reas, reassigning staff to different. Um. Section C at the bottom of it, it says, in filling vacancies, the superintendent will give preference to highly successful employed certified personnel. So, is that a like a category of?
It's changed, during N C L B days, the word is highly.
Highly qualified.
Thank you, highly qualified. And that's changed, saying highly successful, and successful is kind of like our local major, basically if the person can handle children well, if the person can uh, has good academic results on the, the math test, whatever the case may be, then they could be assigned if they want to be, now. If we have three people wanting to be assigned to this certain grade level or certain class, there's no way they're gonna be happy, so administration has to make a judgment call, based on observations that they made, and typically, that's been done by the principal. Every principal has done that, has come to me and we've talked about it, to my knowledge, to best of my recollection. Um. Teachers have not been to satisfied with decisions, at least they haven't come to us if they are, so I think that's one of the reasons our contract's changing, our contract doesn't say, uh, you're a third grade teacher in the Ottawa Elementary School, it says you're a teacher in the Ottawa Elementary School. Now, we wouldn't put, um, a teacher who's a primary certified person to teach high school chemistry. Because if they don't have certification for it, they may not have experience for it, but we could put someone who has secondary shit, it's six through twelve, anywhere in six through twelve grade. And obviously, Dr. Chabot wants someone that's gonna be able to manage the class and have a positive instructional program, but that's why we leave that to the person.
Okay, so question, so is, is highly successful the same thing as highly effective, or is that a?
Yes.
Okay, so, in, in our, in our policy.
You use the word effective.
It says highly effective, so that is the same thing?
Yes. And this was the wording of the team this year.
Can, can I pick on the girl?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, uh, huh, huh, so she has two certifications in middle school science and middle school.
Secondary science.
Secondary science and secondary.
Middle, uh, six through, six through nine, five through nine, for social studies.
Okay, so let's do the six through twelve science. She can teach science to sixth through twelfth grade. Uh, Amanda has an elementary two to eight, so she can also teach sixth grade science, seventh grade science, eighth grade science. But they can't switch. So she can teach six through twelve science, general science. But, and she can teach sixth through eighth grade general science. But she can teach third grade, but she can't teach third grade. So she decided she wanted to be a third grade teacher, she wouldn't qualify for Amanda's job because she's not successfully certified.
Okay, um, okay, so it is the same as effective.
Yes.
Um. Next one, I'm trying to leave B ten.
Okay.
Getting around to the right of the floor, it's the next page. So it says, uh, in the first, uh, paragraph, it says sixty calendar days after the birth of the child, the employee shall be expected to return to work. So is this for all sta, all, um, certified staff? So. So, though, so so what about staff that's qualified for, um, F M L A?
That's all F M L A, that's where the expect, that's where the regulation comes from, so any staff that's covered by F M L A is going to be expected to return after sixty days. And they, they, during that sixty days, it's not paid leave unless they have.
Okay, so, so this is my question, so, so this does not apply this whole maternity section, are you saying it doesn't apply to the staff that doesn't qualify for F M L A, or?
No, it does not, well, we try to do the same thing, I would try to do the same thing, we don't have to, we got to follow F M L A, but if someone someone does not qualify for F M L A, we'd not have that come up. Uh, we would not, and I, and I apologize, I can't remember how I know with insurance, we only have to insure someone at less than twenty hours a week. I don't know about kind of F M L A benefits, if you don't talk to me yet, I'm sorry, but I would like to have it consistent, because otherwise, you see the vision while you, you respect that, and the teacher's employee, the more you respect the zone of that.
Okay, so basically F L M A require, for, for our agency, it's a health insurance.
Yeah.
Right, if you're off on F L M A, we continue your health insurance, right? That, that's the main.
And we guarantee you the job, you saw a similar job, they, they may not necessarily get the exact same job back at, uh, a similar position.
So I, I understand F M L A, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be clear on what this says, so so it says sixty calendar days after the birth of a child, the employee may be expected to return, shall be expected, shall. But F M L A, if I give birth on one day, I can take twelve weeks, not sixty days.
Well, that's sixty work days, is what we're talking about, the sixty days, it's twelve weeks, so it just still gets the full eighty-four days.
If you're reading sixty work days, and, and boy, you're in the danger of the session calendar.
Probably, we should probably say sixty work days.
Well, it should say twelve.
Twelve weeks, yes, twelve weeks.
Twelve weeks.
Twelve weeks would be less, you're right, I, I, I agree, because the way it worked, the, when the first time I saw it was sixty calendar days, so.
Yeah, two, two months.
I would change that to twelve, uh, twelve weeks.
Okay.
I agree.
So I, I just want to be clear on this, if, if, in order to qualify for F M L A, you need to have worked in the district for a certain amount of time, is it a year or a certain amount of hours?
Yeah, it's a year.
Um. But let's say, I've been here in the district for less than a year, um, I may have a baby, I have a whole bunch of sick leave. I can't, I can't use that to take time off?
It's saying if, if you've been here, if you had not qualified for F M L A yet, if you're a teacher, the maximum number of leave days you would recruit, twelve, that you get paid for.
Okay, okay, so I would have my twelve days of sick leave that I, that I could use.
Yes.
As maternity leave.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So when it says. Okay, so when it says. Okay, leave with pay shall be approved only to extent recruited, I understand that, if you have the, if you have approved sick leave, you can use that and get paid, if you're using F M L A, don't get paid. It says issuance will depend on current sick leave. Uh, that is not right, right, because you can take
Issuance of pay.
Off for F M L A.
Yes, issuance, what that, what we're meaning there is issuance of pay will depend on what's in here.
Issuance of pay.
Yeah.
Not relief.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um. Uh, okay, next, section eleven, association privileges, um.
Are we adding issuance of pay to that question?
I'll talk to, I'll, I ain't talking to committee about it, yes, that's what I recommend.
Uh, so, the next section eleven is the association privileges, associations shall have the privilege to use those in school facilities, is this a reference to?
It, this could be either A E A, N E A, or A F T.
Okay, so, but we don't have that.
We used to have it, but we locked it in there in case it comes back, we don't have to redo it.
It's our teacher, teacher.
I wanted it essentially, right? And, and what, what things have happened, though?
I think two thousand thirteen or fourteen.
I think something like that, it got pretty expensive, it was like seven hundred bucks for a year or something like that. Plus. Um. I want to think that teachers felt safe they didn't use.
So none of section eleven.
Doesn't bother you in a minute.
Uh, so in section twelve, leave days. Um, so can you explain, um how leave da, how leave days can be used?
Okay.
Under what circumstances can they be used?
They have, we have two personal days, they have, they can be saying, I'm gonna go to town by brushes. We, we fluctuate all over the place on leave days, my predecessor put all days as leave, because he had one teachers to lie, that they were sex, where they had a family on us, but the policy says two, so we stick with the two personally.
At least, the question, the two, I was gonna ask, the two personal leave days can be for anything?
Correct, and if they're not used during the year, then they revert to helping accumulate sick leave. Sick leave can accumulate to two hundred days by policy. Two days is also personal leave by policy. Leave days, leave days professionally, that we talked about already, professionally does not, is not taken away from teacher's leave. People typically go professionally because the principal or I, if you see a conference, you think teacher. People typically go professionally because the principal or I have to see a conference, we think teacher has the benefit from, so we ask them to go.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about professional leave, I'm talking about the.
The regular leave?
Yeah, that's regular.
Family, family or personal illness.
Okay, so it, so it's just sick leave?
Yeah.
So they can't use it for anything but sick leave?
No, we have two days for personal leave for other things. For example, if you've got to go to court because you have being directed, that's personal leave, that's not sick. Or if you just want to get out of town, you want to extend the weekend, and there's, there's room, or there's not, I mean, I think we have something in there about a minimum and a maximum, what do we do on that? 12D, a maximum of three certified personnel approved per day for personally, including 12D. Uh, but so after that, Lance doesn't have to approve that.
Okay, okay, so I, I'm, so. At the top, it says eligible leave, and if you have one point, so for days per month, you get one point. One point, 10 point for days for a year for 10 month employees. So those are sick days. Those are not personal days. And they cannot be used for, I mean, to go to court, or anything else, only sick.
And you require proof?
We require proof if someone's leave days extends a holiday. That's part of the agreement. Because we had people like, you know, this coming weekend's, three day weekends, President's Day. So it's real nice to have Friday off, so you have a four day weekend. But, so the agreement says, it's been on the agreement, I don't know since I've been here, shortly after I came to this, that if you don't have a doctor's, if you have three days leave, you need to have a doctor's note saying, if a person is out, you get doctors. If you don't have a medical reason for being out on Friday this week, and you take, take Friday off, and you have Saturday and Sunday and Monday, you get doctors for Monday. So, uh, so if I just take the call care day, whatever day, and take it on medical, I don't have to bring proof?
No.
So, so basically, we're saying.
We're going to trust them, unless extending a holiday. Or if, if we have people extending Christmas break, any, any, any holiday, then it looks a little shit.
This is one of those things that is policies that have, by the hand.
Okay, so when it says on D, it says no more than three certified personnel, personnel pre-approved leave on the same day, unless waived by the superintendent. So that applies, that applies to personal leave?
No, probably, that's any leave now. That's going to be hard to, with what we're facing right now with COVID, it's very hard sometimes to approve that, to follow that correctly. Because someone, if they, if they have COVID, or they have the flu, I don't want them here. I don't want them contaminating everybody else, so then we're going, we're going to suck it up and try to find stuff.
But doctors have free proof.
Hang on, if people are saying, I want to make a dental appointment, you've got two more people out, I'll make a dental appointment on Friday. I've already got two people out, now make your dental appointment following Friday. Now, if it's, if it's, if I was doing this, I was the principal, and Lanning Lance, the father, is lying thinking as well, we haven't talked about it. If someone is sick, sick, we're only going to limit it to three, we don't want them here. This makes no sense.
Or, like, like I was saying, it's really approved.
So.
Correctly, somebody gets the flu, you can't have their. I'm not planning on having the flu Fridays, like.
Right, but you can have a free proof.
You can, oh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that would be a sick day. And would you be using, would be using sick leave?
So do you have a lot of sick people in the last month of the school year?
Believe it or not, in the last few years, the last couple of weeks, it's rare if someone's out.
We have, we had a last year, we had a blackout day. So that there, in this office, there's blackout days that we would.
We don't approve leave.
We don't approve leave.
And that's the policy as well, believe. Yeah, that's the policy.
Um, so, okay.
Right, right here. The last two weeks of school are listed as a blackout day.
Now, someone's sick on blackout days, that's their sick, they just want to.
I've always found like the last few weeks, the last month, the best incentive for teachers.
Yes.
They're excited to be there because of the film.
All right. Everything's up. Good enough.
So we found with the, the board mandated sick days, that in December, everybody's sick, right? Because now that their board mandated sick days are going to end, and so they're going to use them up. They don't want to lose them. So they, they all take off in December. And so I just wondered if you have the same, same issue. Somebody has, what, 10 days per year, they haven't used them, and now the last month is coming around, and you don't require any documentation for them to take off sick.
But they can accumulate to 200, which is the best disability insurance there is. And then we also have involuntary leave transfer, where if a person has a serious illness. For example, a rookie teacher, if they get COVID, they're going to get doctors, they don't have enough sick leave. So people who have accrued sick leave, uh, like I've been here a great while, so I've got, definitely a significant amount of sick leave, probably 120 days, 130 days. Uh, doing a lot better, though, I had an awkward, had a wrestling match with a pony a few years ago. And I can say, okay, I can give up to five days to Lance if he's out sick leave. So we can take care of it.
So the, the next one is F, sick leave may be used for FMLA. Does, does that just mean FMLA leave, right?
Yes, it means that while they're, if they have, like I said a few minutes ago, if they, if their reason for being out, like, let's say maternity leave, that's good. They have 12 weeks. Pardon me, if they have any accrued sick leave, they get paid with sick leave, if they want to use them. They don't have to use them. If they want to get, excuse me, if they want to get paid, they can use the sick leave. If they don't have sick leave, they can, they can be off work, and they don't get paid.
Okay, so this means that, I mean, technically, you can, you can live and pay. And if you don't, then you take out the.
You, you, without that, and if someone said, well, what's the value of FMLA? It protects your job.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, the next, just the same, same paragraph, approved leave requested will be determined based on the severity of the employee's need. So this, we're talking about FMLA or sick leave, or both?
I would say, we're talking about FMLA. I think we will follow FMLA, but that's the whole paragraph dealing with FMLA. So, um, it's got to be, you can't just say, well, I need FMLA without a reason. We need to have a chronic reason for availability for FMLA.
So that, that sentence refers to FMLA? H, uh, just below that. So it says sick leave may be used to care for a spouse, child, parent, relationship. So now we're talking, we're not talking about FMLA, we're talking about straight up sick leave?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so we can, this says it can only be used for spouse, child, or parent.
Thank you. Yes, you're correct. If you're, I'm sorry, you can look up an answer for me, I'm sorry. Right? Yes, that's correct.
So no, not grandparents or grandchildren? Okay. So. So in this part that we fixed a while back, that has all of the, the definition of family.
Under bereavement.
That is a bereavement.
Under bereavement, under bereavement?
That's about first and second degree, it doesn't seem good. Does bereavement leave, this is sick leave, because it cannot have the same.
Uh, no, no, it's not, it's on the first page, um, according to the statute. Family member is, and then it's, it lists, it has one, two, three, four, five, um, relationships. Or is that?
You just.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's probably page two, I might not remember, but it's the one.
It's under D?
It's D1F. So that defines all of the ways that you can, um, be related to someone and use sick leave. Which is much more comprehensive than spouse, childcare.
Is that what the statute says? Because it just says define family member. Is it as it relates to leave, or is that just the definition of family member?
This is for leave or sick leave.
I don't believe that's the intention. I think that did, I think the, I think most people probably interpreted that, or say that way. I think ARS 23 just refers to, um, family members, defining family members for whatever benefits you are to sick leave. We can easily change that to have.
Well, no, it is, I mean, I think, I'm pretty sure it's in the, we have the sick leave.
That's true, isn't it? Definition.
Yeah.
Yeah. It says definition, it doesn't say anything with regard to leave or what.
This is in here because of the sick leave, um, policy and statute, so. So if you can pull up the, the sick leave policy, it'll be in there.
So your question is, Wendy, could, could 12H have the same parameters as, um, B1F?
I'm saying, if it, if we're talking about sick leave, um.
You'd like to see him alive?
It, it needs to, because that's the law.
And you can dispose of the teachers.
Okay. Um, okay, so, and then in the same, same place, back to leave days, H, sick leave may be requested for spouse, child, parent. And then it says, by requesting illness, family, not exceed 10 days. So that's saying that if, if you're using your sick, sick leave, not for yourself, um, but with, for, for a family member, you can use 10. But if you're using it for yourself, you have more, because you can accrue up to 200 sick leave. So, um, so those 200 days, those, those aren't limited for the individual to use.
Right. Now, after three days, we can say we want to hear from, we want doctor's evidence.
Right.
Now, obviously, if you know someone like Eric, he was, we knew he was honest, but we didn't know that they asked for documentation. We talked to the family, we knew it. So it's simply applied through the test.
Okay, uh, Q, we're still on 12Q. This is one that has caused some, some disagreements in the past. No personal leave can granted on a day before or after a holiday break. Okay, so does that mean a single day before or after the holiday?
That means anything that extends a holiday. Now, we had a question a couple of years ago, someone gets a holiday, took Thursday off, and whoever the principal was turned it down. Well, I wasn't going to, I was going to be here on Friday, but they didn't, they, they didn't, they didn't think that was what was going to happen. Well, in my, my regulation. So if it's going to extend that holiday, it's going to take construction time away from kids, we're going to be very, very careful about that.
So, okay, unless, okay. So unless there's a medical emergency, so, okay.
Now, excuse me. Here's an example. If a person can combine, and people try to do this kind of stuff, if they can combine a personal leave day with getting a teeth cleaned, you know, a minor medical operation, or procedure, uh, before Christmas, it, it looks obvious that if you're just trying to extend the holiday, and you would smile about that. And so we found that, I, my recommendation would be to not bring them. They've got all two leaves to get a teeth cleaned, for example, using that example. And like to see them here with the kids.
Okay, so if some, so they can't take, um, the week before or the week after, or any number of those days?
We've never said, we've never, we've never been that specific. But where we've seen cases where it appeared by our judgment, the principal judgment, I think, I don't know, has involved in that. Because I think, I remember the case. If it appears that it's, it's planned to extend the holiday, how would that go?
Dr. Lewis, it, it says in a blackout date, a week before or after one break. So the blackout dates that are listed, it says a week before or after one break.
Those are days where there's nothing to handle. Unless it's really, unless the person's really secular on FMLA.
But this is holiday, so there's so many holidays, that if, if you can't extend, if you can't use any of those days, extending out from any holiday, especially if you consider the weekend on the other side. Like, like if it's a, let's say it's a Friday holiday, and you can't have to take a Monday off, then that effectively blacks out a huge one year of the school year.
It also leaves more, it also leaves much more. There's only something like eight days of holiday during the school year. So they have a lot of other time to use.
Sure, no, I'm not saying that there aren't other times to use it, I'm just trying to figure out what, what, what the intent is here.
Trying, trying to attempt is to try to keep teachers, if we can, the students. Because, for example, this year, we have a dearth of substitute teachers. And it's going to be better for kids, you know, the American education system, because they'll get the future list.
Okay, so if no personal leave to be granted on a day before or after a holiday break, it means the entire week?
Probably.
As long as you, as you explained, last year, essentially, it's Thanksgiving, and I decided, hey, I'm going to take Monday off too. And now I'm going to take Tuesday off. But that, me taking Tuesday off is not just another day, it's a further extension of the holiday, and therefore would not be covered.
Because the question last year was, the person who took Monday and Tuesday for Thanksgiving, and wanted to get paid for Tuesday. You had a continual absence from Wednesday before the Thanksgiving day, through the weekend, through Monday, through Tuesday. So they took a week off.
And both of those days all extended that holiday break, rather than, you know, they come back one day. It could come back one day and still take Tuesday off and not be a problem, because that's not extending it.
That's good.
So why? So why extending breaks?
The only thing that I could see with all this is, there's only certain times that you require a doctor's excuse. Is one of those times that you require a doctor's excuse the day before a holiday? I would. I mean, is it, I'm not, I know you would, because they say that in the paper, that you require a doctor's excuse if somebody takes off sick the day before a holiday.
We talked about a day before.
Yeah, because.
If it extends a holiday, yes.
Unless, unless the employee can document a medical emergency or bereavement leave, it doesn't.
So that point, then you would require a doctor's.
Yes.
Right.
Or the doc, southern doc.
But, but I thought you could require a doctor's excuse unless there were three consecutive days of sick leave, sick leave taken.
We used to say two, we get three, if the policy says three, we go back to three. We were saying two last year, and we went back to three.
Right, but we're talking about just one day.
If it extends a holiday, we will, we will ask for a doctor's excuse.
Can you make sure you have that?
Yeah.
Make sure you have that.
And.
Or just.
And that it's legal, because, because Arizona's sick leave says that you can take two days off without a doctor's note. But if you take three days off consecutive without a doctor's note, you can ask, you can ask.
We can, we can ask for that three days anytime. This is specific to a holiday.
Right, but, but according to Arizona law, is, is that?
I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying.
No, it, it has to be worked out. I agree, you know, this, this is stuff that Eric Kresrich working for you, I guarantee you, he knows all these regulations, and he will pull you to the, to the fire off, right? He, you know, he's going to say, hey, I'm taking my paid day sick time off for the state on, on the day before Christmas, and if you don't like it, you can't ask me. Legally, you can't ask me, so I'm taking it, you know?
See, one of the, one of the things of flexibility is that we have, we don't have, we've got a time before and after the holiday, using Christmas as an example. Like, this year, or this coming year, we have a week before and a week after. So I get a lot of time, it's not as tight as, you know, business where you work through the holiday. Now, back to your question. If it's to, unless the. Now, back to your question. If it's, unless the law has changed in the last year, I'm not aware, I haven't seen a policy change or a law change. This is supported by law and bill of verifications. Good question.
Well, this is the same policy with the family stuff, all, all of the family members. And it says, we actually changed it in here recently. I mean, we did change it. We changed it from two days, two consecutive days, to three consecutive days.
It was changed because of law change.
Right.
Policy, sorry, policy.
The law changed. No, no, the, the law requires. You can't ask until there's been more than two days.
Well, my, my thing on this, Marty, is, you know, because it says right here, we've got Q, no personal leave granted on a day before or after a holiday break. Okay, that says that right there. Then you come down here, blackout dates. Administration will take thoughtful consideration, week before or after a winter break. Kind of, click there. So I wanted to say, the week before and after holidays are blacked out, except for sick leave.
Qualified sick leave.
Qualified sick leave. And if it's after the, you know, there'll be a lot of time for you to ask for documentation, though I'm taking these, this week off for appointments, whatever, that's fine. But if they're gone over three days, then you can ask for something. But let's just make it clear, simple. The dates, the week before, the five working days, the five working days after are blacked out for the.
And, and blackout dates are approved by policy or statute, I can't remember which, because we had to reduce them under blackout days. We had blackout days a few years ago, and we brought those back down last year.
So I, I would feel like that would have to be like a very clear conversation with the staff. Because it does say administration will take thoughtful consideration, and that's a benefit. That means that I could come and say, hey, I, I really wanna take, I haven't seen my grandma in 20 years, right?
Few years ago, Christmas, this room was full of teachers.
Yeah.
And they'll extend their winter break.
Right, so.
People were extending their winter break as high as two weeks, that's why we cut it off.
So, but it still says, administration will take thoughtful consideration.
Trying to think we did.
Okay, so, so if, if you change it to, to, um, the, to reconcile it with the no, no personal leave granted. Right? You, you're potentially removing a benefit. So that would have to be really clear.
I think I could just understand.
To, well.
Unless they, unless they're.
We can assume they don't know.
They, they need to know, that's, yeah.
But we highly do if it's unright.
Right, but this is part of what's gonna be the shape.
Oh, no, it's, it's, I'm saying, like, Eric, I was finishing, Eric, he said, we can assume.
Right, right.
But we don't know unless we actually have.
So, yeah, it's T.
Yeah.
It's T.
T in Tom.
Yeah, where it says, the administration will take thoughtful consideration.
But I, we are talking about Q.
So we're talking about both of those.
Q and T kind of go kind of hand in hand when you have, they'll take thoughtful consideration the week before or after a winter break.
Right, but what about Thanksgiving or Memorial Day? So those need to.
Well, or spring break.
Right, those need to be reconciled. It could be, it could be that it's changed to, we will take thoughtful consideration on days before and after holidays. It, it just needs to be clear what.
I would even be fine if it was just put the week before and week after of spring, Christmas break, fall break. Things like that, we put, these are blackout days, but if we even, if something's requested, it'll give a thoughtful consideration.
Do we have to take it back?
I don't really like thoughtful consideration.
We had more blackout days in the past. I think that, and we overstated blackout days. We had to reduce it to these alignment policy or statute last year.
Right.
I think you tell you make it ambiguous.
Or maybe.
For not that we're right, but any time you put something in that says, the administration can be, the holiday break can be taken without administration approval. Well, when you put in administration approval, besides, and, and under what criteria, so.
The principal's charge and then they.
Lance, Lance, what's his heart? I go in and I tell him, my grandma is sick, I need to take off and go to Timbuktu, and he says, you know, Lonnie, go ahead and go. So Eric hears that, so next day he goes in and says, hey Lance, my grandma's sick, I gotta go to Timbuktu. Well, he knows Eric, he knows he's not gonna go to his grandma, so he tells him, no, I'm not, I can't extend that for you, Eric, you can't go. And then, and then Eric says, well, you just approved Lonnie. How come, you know, I, I hate. Thirty, thirty-three years I've had every excuse, everybody come to me and say, hey, you let him do it, how come I don't get to do it? You know, and so I just, I think it just should be black and white. You can't do this. And, but you might disagree, definitely. I don't care to disagree. But it just, I've always had that sort of stuff come back to, to bite me, right? And so I, I mean, I would read it different. You know, you can't extend a holiday break, period, not without a employee. Just can't extend it. And so no excuses, you can't extend it.
Then they're gonna, then they're gonna say, what if I have COVID and you're going up quarantine? So I think.
But that's sick.
Yeah, because they're still extending the holiday.
Right, but you.
Mine hasn't had a doctor's.
That's the argument we, that's the argument we've heard in the past.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure, I, I understand that.
But there are those teachers, though, that like last year, there was a particular condition, I could go to a doctor's appointment. They switched her doctor's appointment to the day extending holidays. And the principal at the time told her, you're not going to get paid for the day we go. And she says, that's fine, I understand if there's an emergency, but I have to go to this necessary doctor's appointment. So she didn't get paid for the day, because she understood that she was extending the extra holiday, and she was fine with not getting paid for that day.
So I, I, I just, I, I had a, we're talking about personal leave.
You're also talking.
And there's only two days.
Yeah, but let's talk about kids for a moment.
But I, no, 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 I, I.
We all understand, we all understand, you need, need teachers in the classroom, and so we're not arguing that point. We just want to make sure that it's clear to your teachers.
Right.
Exactly what you're wanting.
The behavior we've seen, I think it's clear what you're saying. Do you think?
That is, that is very right, if you're true about, yeah.
But I, but my goal is to say.
I was, I was trying to get something out. But we have personal leave days, there's just two of them. So if we're talking about taking a week off before or after Christmas, that can't be a personal leave day, we're talking about sick days. So we, we can't tell people that they can't be sick.
Not, 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 not.
Okay, so.
So we can't require a doctor's excuse.
After three days. So really, it kind of.
Kind of figuring this out, though. Now someone says, taking my two personal days, Tuesday, Wednesday, and I have doctor's appointments on Thursday, Friday. So Edgar, they don't have to be saving. Because they're taking the first days, the two sick days, they don't gotta bring a note that, they may have to work that Monday, but the rest, the four, they just extended it by four days.
You're right. That's the kind of thing, and as I said to someone, you know, that rules unfortunately are made for those that break them. And that type of thing, I've seen happen, not, not, I saw that happen in my previous assignment.
Okay, but, but for sick leave, there's very specific requirements for sick leave, so we don't actually have a lot of, of.
We take, we take the, unless it's three days, we take the teacher's word for it. Unless you see something, I accept it, let it go.
So that kind of takes, takes care of that. If someone's sick, you could.
I, I don't think that there was ever an issue of someone taking their sick time during that week, in that kind of manner.
Right, so all of this, all of this discussion really applies to personal days, and it's only two.
And we, and we grant, as we say earlier in the handbook, which the teachers agreed to, we will approve. Lance can approve, you know, in advance, two teachers take the same personal leave day. If not, I think it's three, some number like that. But we have a limit to that, because obviously, we're paying a hundred bucks ourselves, and we can get them. But that's rare. So we enjoy now that Mercy, KC, and Lance are setting. That's taken away from the program for the rest of the kids, so.
I mean, something like two?
Um, yeah.
One, and you can only use secondary, it can't be elementary.
So you have up to 200 hours of sick days that you can accumulate, right?
200 days.
200 days, right, and you can accumulate.
Yes.
Okay, then, you only have two voter mandated sick days. So we're, we're grouping, right now, I feel like in the conversation, we're grouping all that together, because I can take 200 days.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And, and, um, there's only specific times that we ask for an excuse, right? And that was, the conversation was earlier, only specific times. So I can take the week before Christmas sick.
So there's.
It would, that would also ask for documentation, okay?
Okay, so there's really.
There's one, three days.
There's only two, there's only three types of leave that we're talking about. We're talking about personal leave, which is, you can take. Take it for anything if it's approved, right? Um, that's a blackout day. And then there's the sick leave, that is Arizona sick leave requirements, that are very specific. And then there's all the other days that you may have accumulated, that the Arizona requirements don't necessarily apply to.
What would be an example?
I, I see what you're saying.
An example would be. So I think what the conversation comes down to is this here needs to be rewritten and be very specific about your requirements. Of when an employee has to bring in an excuse. When you can use those days around a holiday, and, and just gonna have to be very, very specific. So that if I'm a, if I'm a, a bad teacher that wants to extend out my vacation, that I can look at this very carefully and read all this. And say, okay, so if I'm gonna be gone, and I'm gonna use my, my sick days. It, it's very well written in here that I have to come back with a doctor's excuse. Other than those two days that the voters give me.
There is very, and all the voters are complaining, but policy says two days and accumulate 200 sick days. It's rare that a teacher doesn't understand that, because there's two of three ways. We talked to, to them about the beginning of the year, typically. And we also have a CAR. For example, our CAR is at NCRF, it's called Personal Action Request. And almost anything that affects personnel or payment has to be in a CAR, will give that the accounting to explain that. If I have, if Angela inputs her, like, she's not a big family, if Amanda puts in two days, a personal leave day for tomorrow. If I'm the one, Lance signs it first, then I sign, and I'll say, if there's accumulated personal leave. And Venus can check on the, on files and see if there's, if, because there's no personal leave left, and we reject and send it back. So teachers know about it. Uh, and they learn about it real fast, so.
Okay, can, I can give a, I'm sorry, can we, can you say that, you're saying that someone can ask to use their sick leave?
No, we're talking about personal.
Okay, so we're just talking about those two days now?
In my example, it's 23.
Just, 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 just the two, sorry, I misunderstood that. Um, okay.
So we had an employee, this way, it was, he said, for his, his, that voter mandated sick days were gonna go away. He was gonna use the two days to go work at another department, right? He had a part-time job there, he was gonna go use those two voter mandated days. So we said to him, you're not sick, you can't take those days. And you know what he said to us? You can't ask me. You cannot legally ask me what I'm doing on those days. Then he researched it, and you know what? He was completely right. We could not ask him what he was doing on those days. So we, he hadn't lied, but he, he could take those days and go. And, um, so those are the sort of things that, that we're finding, that we're having to be. Rewrite everything, redo everything, because those things are coming up now, because they don't have the work ethic that. You, you know what I'm saying? They don't have that work ethic. They, they, and, and they're gonna throw in your face, and they're, and they're gonna make you eat it, unless you, you know, you're very, what?
And, and technically, we, we don't technically ask, Venus is a grand around teachers or whatever. But she's saying, if you take these days and you wanna be paid for it, then we need a doctor's note. You wanna take those days, we're not asking you. If you don't bring it a doctor's note, that's fine, it's not gonna be a case of.
So if I wanna go and extend my prison vacation out for five days, and go to the Philippines, and I'm willing to take the cut and pay, I can just go?
No, we're not gonna prove, we're gonna dock. All we could do, we could, we could take personal.
I'm gonna use dock.
We could take personal action, we can dock pay, that's the first thing that would happen. If that happened repeatedly, it'd be, had to be, uh, personal discipline.
I mean, technically, you could have a person, they want six extra days. They want, they want six extra days, calling it sick Wednesday and Thursday. I'm using a personal day for Friday, yeah. So this school starts again. I'm sick Monday, Tuesday, I'm taking a personal day Wednesday.
That's why with that exact thing, the thing was happening, that's why it went down to two days, but policy didn't support it, so, maybe go back to three. Lance was telling me a story a couple of weeks ago about, telling his former colleagues in the valley, one district is paying as high as $200 a day for substitutes. So they're worried about teachers in neighboring districts, and districts are like across the street from one another. Of taking a sick day from Aho, playing stub in Hilo Bend for $200 a day, and making, why not? That's unethical stuff, and that's what creates, that's what makes rules like this necessary, unfortunately. And those people who are honest and have integrity, they're getting, they're getting impacted as well, because, as we said, we got universal treatment people. It's frustrating, but that's where things are sometimes.
So it seems tricky, like you can't really have two different sets of rules. For, for some of the sick days, you require, um. Documentation on day one, and some of the sick days, you have required documentation on day three. Day three?
Policies, policy, the land supports us for the three days.
What? Oh, sorry?
Well, policy, if this is what you're asking, on the three days, that's one thing we can, legally by policy, we can ask for a doctor's note. They don't have to tell us, but most doctors know, just say, I'm treating Dr. Lee for asthma, or something like that. We don't have to ask the doctor more for, for, treatmentally, or they'll say, Lonnie Guthrie's under my care, for these three days, something like that.
Okay.
Or they get a work release, they return the work, being, staying in this team.
And we have some people that I say, whoa, you can't come back, if they have an injury, especially one of the maintenance workers, if they have an injury. They're gonna come back, work, work at work to get your release. I, I don't want to be illegal or a liability to a district, so. I, I, I foresee that you, we need to know that you're safe to be back here lifting 25 pounds or driving a vehicle, or what the case might be.
Would it be inappropriate if we asked you to, to go back with this leave, part of this document? To do the research you have to do to, to consider the different days off, the paid sick time, the, the district sick time, and paid leave?
I can do that. I rewrite this, I can do, I wanna do it with the teachers, because this is their document. And it's gonna take some time. I hope, I don't, our next board meeting, I've forgotten about the fact, when I had one long board meeting in March, it's March 9th. I do it once in the ninth, but I, I would hope I could do it. I'll sure try. Because I wanna get this baby to bed, because I'm also gonna bring back T in March 9th, the classified, because we finished that about a week ago. And, um, and then the classified crew is very, how would you say, is picky about making sure that what certified rights are that they have, unless the statute changes. For example, there's just a, no such thing as continuing status of employment for a classified person, certified people have this. There's nothing like what tenure was 20 years ago, because Arizona legislature disavow tenure. But, um, I'd like to get that approved too, because I wanna get some things back to bed before getting to school.
So probably you have to do this one time, and then it'll probably be fine for 20 years.
I hope so.
You know, just one time, it has to be done, right? Do you agree with that, Wendy?
Yeah, I hope so.
With our legislature right now.
So, yeah, it will change a lot.
Yeah, especially if you, it speeds it up involving, and it might be a change somewhere, or it just seems to be tweaked, but it won't be to.
A huge thing like this, yeah. So I, I just wanna throw up there that it is possible that we apply the Arizona laws for all of the sick leave.
Of course.
Um, and to me, that would be a, a nice benefit and also clear.
Think we are, but.
The same way you're doing, just be, the first 40 hours of leave is affected by the, the sick time law.
But ARS does not talk about teachers' sick leave or personal leave, it's in policy, because, you know, they've got 20 south, 20 different. Because there's, they've got twenty seven, twenty different.
But this is not specifically for sick time.
Yeah, this is just.
The unpaid sick time, voter mandated. Now we, the administration is just saying that applies to the first forty hours of their, about possible sixteen hundred hours.
It, it seems like you wouldn't have to do that because it, like, if the fear is, I understand you have blackout days and all that, but if the fear is that someone has two hundred sick days and they're gonna keep taking them, they're gonna have to come up with an awful lot of doctor's notes.
Yeah.
Right? Because after two days they have, they'll be required to be, have a doctor's note.
Once you take the entire month out, maybe it's. Right?
I, that happened in my family, uh, with two people in my family that had been in the classroom for a number of years. And they'd accumulated a hundred and fifty sick days. And, uh, and it was right before Christmas, basically, missed Thanksgiving and Christmas break, and it was legitimate, they had serious surgery. And that paid, paid the bill. Um, one of the things that, not to be argumentative, but I do that well, I know some days. This is a political process. Like, it, it's not full-blown negotiations like we saw thirty years ago, but it's that type of discussion. Um, and so sometimes it's easier for us to sit here and say, we can do this, this, and this. I don't really wanna take the team of teachers and say, we're gonna do this come hell or rain or water because then it doesn't become even for working nation's discussion, it becomes, Bob, give me the new mandates. And some places I have to do that, but I wanna be as gentle about that as I can. Cause we're all good people and appreciate their support and their work when we're doing this.
Yeah, it just has to be, has to be clear and I agree with that, but.
And I think, I think, I think maybe it's clearer to them than it is to all of us because they live. And if they've been here more than two years, they, they're pretty well understanding of what's going on.
But it's still needs to be clearly documented.
That's a good part, you know, the rest are actually within the year, so.
I, I don't believe that, like anybody, so.
Um.
We're talking about both of us.
Yeah. Okay, I agree with you that next section, almost done. Uh, non-working A. Uh, non, non-productive teachers get self-paid?
We don't do that.
Okay, so should that be removed?
I don't really think so, no, they wanna do it because it's a way to save expenses, it's a way to get people to take their certificates, cause they don't, they don't do that. And part about nineteen three oh one rule in the statute. If that's your next question.
Yeah, maybe. Okay, so, okay, so, so you're saying that where it says.
We're paying, we're paying them whatever their contract rate is.
District.
This, this up, so, so pay is only a hundred dollars a day.
Okay, so we, so we don't do that? That could be removed?
We haven't done that since I've been here. It's been there, it's been on the books for twenty years, I haven't done it.
So it needs to be removed?
Okay. Good. Um, for that, that is fourteen A. Um, okay. So B and C, fourteen, it says superintendent that they make salary recommendations within the district's salary schedule. Um, so, so does that? Can you, can you just talk a little bit about how salaries are scheduled?
Our salary schedule right now is, uh, not in good shape. Because when I came here, salaries were so low that basically I cut the bottom three years off the salary schedule.
Right, yeah.
So we did raise, so we could raise the starting salary from twenty-eight thousand to thirty-five. And so you go several years where you get a raise unless you go, unless you get three oh one money, the government gives us some money. Or they take additional credits, additional hours to change columns. So that's something I have not changed because we can't afford it. If we do it, we can't afford to pay the people, it's gonna be, so that's a suggestion. What the policy and the meeting heard does is it says to me, for example, if I'm looking for a highly needed special ed teacher right now, um, that's one thing. If I am two days before school starts, I know I've got five kids in that program, I need to spend an extra five thousand dollars that teacher I do it, because I gotta recruit. And I did that to our former band teacher. Person came in, I gave them a raise before they ever started because we needed a band teacher. And a music teacher, so, um, they started with, with no experience, they started, uh, forty thousand, forty-one thousand, I can't remember which. Because I needed that first. Now, if I'd been recruiting in February for band teacher, it would have been better, it wouldn't have been desperate, to be honest. So that sounds a little fright, but it's the real world. So the policy allows that, and so it's being controlled here.
Okay, so.
And I don't, I don't do my best, Randy. If my wife had come to work here, number one, I would negotiate with her, I'd let someone else do it. If I didn't get her five thousand dollar raise, I would flip her suspicions to her, like that thing, we don't do that. We don't supervise our priorities.
So do you come to us and tell us when you're doing that?
Typically, I handle them, yeah.
So I don't, what are the calls? Why did I, we disagree with you, but you know, I just.
To know when it's happening, but it's not based on the college salary schedule. And why? What should justify that?
I think the last time we did it was a, a teacher who, uh, it was brought to the board, was a teacher that was H one B. And when we do H one B to firm, you have to check her pay and the fair labor standard back or something like that. And it was a thousand dollars less or more that we had to bump her up. Um, and if she didn't get any more education or any more experience or whatever, when we did bring that to the board, it's been like six years ago.
What the law requires is, excuse me, when we're bringing in international teacher, they don't want an administration to take advantage of that person just because they think we have no support. A lot of international teachers make significantly more money in beautiful downtown Aho than they do in their home country. They're just abysmal there. Uh, but we can't take advantage of it. We can, someone, cause it was unscrupulous, can say, well, they're not a US citizen, so we're gonna pay them ten percent less to start, cause we can get away with it. That's like Jim Crow laws, you can't do that, 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 you can't do that. That's terrible. So that's what the administration is talking about.
If there is a raise that doesn't include college, getting an extra degree or getting more, whatever applies to you, we do have to bring it too. And that's the only time that I can remember that we never done that. Every other time that it does raises, it's either red for Ed that we're mandated for, it's adjusting minimum wage that we're mandated to, or it's the teacher came to us and said, hey, I'm taking math classes to go, um, there was a teacher that she's not here anymore. She got her, she got her master's leave in curriculum and development. And then even worked with the principal that was there to like be a co-assistant principal. So that was because she got an extra degree, she was in curriculum development, and she was actually working with this principal as like a, an intern. That we don't have to because it's an actual salary schedule. But for the other teacher six years ago that we did her, her, um, her visa didn't work. And the, the Department of Labor says, you need to pay her an extra fifteen hundred dollars to match what everybody else is supposed to be paying for her grade level or whatever. Then that drops to the board. But if it's current salary schedule, we don't have to bring that to the board. You just write it at the end of the contract, and it's the contract that you've already approved to issue. If that makes sense?
One of the things that's frustrating about that is that, according to US News and World Report, while we're funding Arizona education, forty-ninth in the nation, we're paying teachers when, when work, when cost of living is factored in, we're paying teachers in the United States right now, Arizona forty-eighth in the nation. When cost of, and only, we're only behind Mississippi and Oklahoma. But when we factor in cost of living, we're paying people fifteenth in the nation. That's terrible.
That's why you have good teachers living.
We, that's exactly right, Lyle. We've got two decent people sitting here. And, you know, I, my daughter, so I'm gonna be personal, my daughter's a teacher in Las Vegas, and I want her to come home. And she wants to, but she doesn't know, she's been there fifteen or seventeen or a bunch of years. And I was very young when she was born. And so she doesn't know if she can afford to come to Arizona. And we'd love to have her, but it just takes me right off.
Make sure you vote Republican.
So quick, quick question, you said one oh one monies.
Three oh one.
Oh, I'm so, so there was a line out, um.
Sorry, I, I assumed what you're gonna say.
And COG? The one, no.
Um, so base salary schedule number twenty, it says including the base salary, including one oh one monies, it must have been removed.
That's, that's, we don't have those monies anymore.
Okay, so on the salary schedule where it says one oh one, one oh one monies are included in the salary schedule, that's, that's not, not that anymore?
No, we don't get that anymore.
Okay, so that used to be.
We get three oh one, which is a lot more.
Right, but so that's, but that should be removed then? Or one oh one money, okay. I'm just looking at the salary schedule, like the bottom, it says one oh one monies are included in the salary schedule, but they aren't, correct?
Mine has it scratched out.
Pardon?
Does it, yeah, twenty-eight.
Oh, twenty-eight, mine is scratched out.
I'm looking at the.
It's got, oh, yeah.
Oh, then that, then it should, if it's scratched out on the, on the meeting for, it should be on the agenda.
Okay, okay, so that's just a part of the picture, right? Yeah. Okay, okay, and then back to, um, hiring, um, employees that are, um, where it's a they end up getting paid off, off of the salary schedule. Or off of the salary schedule for a specific reason, so, I mean, I see at least one person here that we just, um, voted to move the contract for that. And this is new.
You probably got more than that. We have, probably, we have, we have this, uh, uh, school improvement monies. In two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, we had a lot of money. So we have a couple of people that are getting much higher salaries because, hey, we didn't feel like it was a good news to sell.
Didn't we not have a conversation about, about how we have a, how, when that happens, the board has informed? And it hasn't happened a long time?
One of these teachers that are already, were at that rate previously this year?
Right, but.
Right now, we're not giving people raises. We haven't put the contracts, I, I want to end, I want to end, sorry, I want Venus to fit the contract in a group of camps. So we can start off, we, one day or thirty days. Uh, and we don't have the money this year to have, as we do, to start, to get your contract back in five days, we get fifty bucks or five hundred bucks or something like that.
I, I, I just wanna point out that, that this, this is definitely off the salary schedule and it's, it's happened recently. That's all.
One of these on the list, I'll be third one down, that's, that's a grant one, correct? So that's part of this funding.
And some of these, these numbers are off because of red for Ed, because of different things that you did with salary schedules, that they're blacked out, so it's not gonna look exactly like the salary schedule, like it is what we, that we did. Their contracts went up like seven percent, or twenty percent, whatever, from the thirty-five five that they were making. So it's not gonna be exactly in line with what their education and their experience are because they was here and they qualified for that red for Ed, so it went up tenages. So if you try to pick a teacher and find him on the salary schedule and make more here, grab red for Ed, you're gonna make yourself have a migraine. It's, it's total confusion.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Um, there's a lot of, I was, the one, the one that jumped out to me is a, is a very new hire, and it's, it's off, off the chart. Okay, so, so if the person wasn't qualified, um, for any of these exceptional circumstances, then, then they will be on, put on this chart.
Try, yes, we try this. Unless it's the day before school starts, so we can get someone by going over a hundred bucks or something like that, we've done that.
And then as the, as the years pass, they, they migrate up?
They can, but typically they're in a frozen situation because they're, if they're beyond the salary schedule, they're more right-hand one salary schedule. If we wanted, they're gonna, gonna get rates, unless we have something like red for Ed, and then we've been on three oh one monies as well.
Okay, so, so if I'm, um, if I've been, uh, if I am hired and I've been here for several years, I, I, I automatically will work my way up the schedule, um.
Yes, if, if you continue education, so if you only have a VA and you're here past twelve years, this is where, or, uh, eight years, this is where, stop. You will go past this number until you move over a season line.
Sure.
So that's where the salary step comes from, it goes down.
Right.
So we had a teacher that was here fifteen years, and they worked their whole, and they stayed here because they didn't move.
They never moved across horizontal.
Yeah.
So if you're, it doesn't matter how many years people pass here, you're stuck.
I understand, so, so, but, but you do, if you're, if you're not at the, at that wall, um, if you get more education, then you can keep.
Gosh, yes, in fact, I stand, okay.
Um, so we're so stuck that if you look for my fingers, that's the same number. And that is having to do with us, that's.
And the reason we did that was for recruiting purposes. I, first time I recruited ASU, Houston was there. They were starting teachers at twenty thousand more than we were, and provided a round trip ticket for two to Houston.
Maryland's twice.
There's no way I can, I walked out, there's no way I can compete, no way. Now, I go to Ohio, or hopefully be funding some schools for Lance in Kansas. Place is not that fantastic there, am I right?
Yeah.
Better than here?
Ohio is good.
Ohio is better than Kansas.
Ohio is good.
And Maryland, starting teachers are making taxes? And experienced teachers.
Barely.
And you know, you think this are, are making.
Yeah, taxes is a lot better, yeah.
You see, lots of our teachers that came from Maryland, were here and then went back to Maryland and now they're.
And they have, they have auto parties in Maryland. And there's all, all of our old teacher friends there, not all of us, quite a bunch.
Uh, so, I, I understand that there's financial constraints, um, but like there's an obvious huge difference. I mean, the teachers have less experience, but they might even have a doctorate, um.
We have, we, yes, and it's all financial, too.
Yeah. So, and then, you know, that changes a lot, obviously, as you have, not, yeah, as you work your way down and to the right. Uh, but the other thing I noticed is that it's super inconsistent, like one year jump, you might get five thousand more dollars. And then, um, one.
It probably depends on longevity and our education, I wouldn't, I don't have a memorizer, but that's typically.
And then you might get eighty dollars for another jump sometimes.
Because going across, you're going down these experience lines, doesn't typically generate the pay that going across horizontal in your education does.
But sometimes it does, like for, um, nine to twelve years, if you're going, um, if you have a doctorate, you go one jump down and you get five, five and a half thousand dollars more, um, whereas the jump, the previous jump was, uh, eight hundred dollars.
I wish we could give everybody a raise.
Yeah, I just, I just, I couldn't make sense of, like, why.
Realistically, you're not gonna get somebody here because it, they're, probably absolutely no way that educational offer has only had one to three years. This is, these are, that, these are probably not gonna happen. So we have them there on a salary schedule, but this, and this, how long do they take you to be a doctor?
Twenty years, twenty years of education program.
So this, this, uh, you have a doctorate student, what, one to three years, this is not gonna happen. This is the important.
It's rare, and, yeah, it's rare.
So you're probably looking here. Because these, I know there's only a flat screen computer here, but this is where you're probably supposed to be ending up.
Yeah.
And realistically, you're more down the bar, I don't have my, pulling a line.
Yeah.
It's, it's filler, it's fun.
Yeah, I just, I, I just couldn't find, like, a pattern. I know that it, you know, it's going to increase as you go down there, you go over.
Some think about. Some think about, it's, it's.
It's sort of a map.
We don't want to sacrifice the good for search of the excellent. We've been doing, I created this salary schedule when I was a businessman down here in ninety-seven, because it's the third time I've worked with a small district where I'm having a hard time making payments. So I wanted to give us a range, I wanted to ask you to give a range, instead of that one year, two year, five years, it's one through three, four through seven, six, something like that, so that was something different. And it's, it's, it's worked for, since nineteen ninety-eight.
Wait, so this is the exact schedule?
Mm-hmm.
Since nineteen ninety-eight?
Except we cut the bottom four steps off.
Oh, we, we changed it a couple of times.
Yeah.
Like the actual.
A major change, though, is they're the same, we've cut the bottom four steps off to raise, because we want to recruit good teachers. And, um, there's a lot of turnover in all schools in Arizona, including us, and most of it is by our national teachers. But, uh, if we don't get good people to start with, we're not going to do what we've been trying to do, so that's one of the things. I've recruited, um, Cara out of, out of Ohio, and hope the salary schedule and my charm has nothing to do with it, and hopefully the school. That was supposed to be a joke, Cara.
I giggle, she was watching the inside.
She laughed on the inside, thank you.
So, um, but it says horizontal movement, they started, that horizontal movement is allowed for salary schedule, also vertical movement is allowed for. So it's, it only says horizontal.
Well, it's kind of factored in, because the longer you stay here, the more you're going to move.
Right, but it also could mean, this speaker, as long as you want, and you ever, vertically, I just want to make sure it didn't mean that.
Well, that's not, that's not the case, that's not the case. You've got to trust that your administration knows how to run salary schedules and get things done, that's something we, I've been doing this in Scranton show. I've been, President of Teachers Association negotiating a football index, but we couldn't even come close to reporting these things. Those were the percent given, and far they went down, the figure to some range was, no district has those anymore.
So, um, if we're done with discussion, we actually still have, we need to vote on the table, to table the actual vote on the agreement.
Okay, thank you all for, for separating.
Oh, thank you for bringing.
It's been a long time in the making.
I was going to say the same thing, so everybody's voting, I realize it's kind of a fun thing to go through, but it's something that Eric said.
This is something.
Policy, it's kind of a policy.
Mr. President, something I should have done this year, we got too busy.
Yes.
Is we should have done this executive session before we started the process in October, that's what I typically do.
Okay.
I always didn't.
You already got this motion to.
Mind this, we can take the motion and.
Mr. Hopkins, who really won?
I say aye.
All right. Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Goodry.
Aye.
Ms. Duncan.
Aye.
Mr. Curris, it's a aye, and we have five to zero, table the vote on this.
And I will work with the committee, hopefully in the next three weeks, give this raise, we'll march line four, and we'll be like, 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 oh.
And next item on the business agenda was approval of request for board agenda items.
Oh.
A request has been made that the board vote to place individual board members' requests.
I'm sorry, I thought you were asking for.
A request has been made, board votes to place individual board members' requests be approved by a majority of the vote. The wording on that is a little bit awkward to read, but, uh.
As played, board member was being to do a vote by the board on individual agenda request to appear on the agenda. Yeah, that's what we're saying.
That's all.
So it looked more like we were all in agreement, um, as such, instead of just one person.
I, I, I completely understand this, um, you know, I, I know there's some agenda, as we've had in the past. That numerous board members have asked for, and sometimes it didn't happen. Um, I almost feel like I'm kind of micromanaging herself by doing this, I'm not against it, but I, I just don't, I just don't understand very well.
I think it might be managing it, because if one person does it all the time.
Well, some of us, I'm, I'm not trying to put this rule, some of us are more engaged with some of the stuff, going on different items. I, I, I believe there's probably three of us that do the majority of the requests, maybe some more than others, and that's okay. We're all, we're already board members here, we're all going to have different, huge different thoughts and processes. Um, I'd hate to see people's agenda requests being branded, so there's the formism on it, because that, that seemed to be kind of dangerous, right?
Well, I mean, this was kind of, the date, obviously, we put it in place in December, if anything, the board members may have things to do with it.
Correct.
And they have the fail-safe there, or the trap door, if I put some crazy idea on it, soon as we start. Somebody can say, I'm making a motion to table it, because she had a wacko idea, that it's tabled indefinitely, and then tabled indefinitely.
Well, tabling would do the same thing.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Yeah, but I think we should be aware of it and do it.
Well, I'm not sure, hold on, I mean, to do that, so I would have to make an agenda on the request for, for March. Then we would have to vote on the board to even get that approved, to go on the March agenda.
And so, so technically, if you, so if I said right now I wanted a thing for March, it would then have to be an agenda item for us to individually vote on these agenda items.
Yep.
So it'd be another month before even beyond there, so this is just adding.
Or, or require, or require a special session of the board to vote down.
Just basing this off personal experience.
I don't think that was intended, I think the intent was if, if Bob Dooley, the board member, says, I want to put X, Y, Z on the agenda for March. We list it down in the board votes, whoever the list is, the board votes yes or no on it, that's what I think.
What, 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 just going out of my experience, as the president before, and his clerk, I think it's best like it would just keep continually. At the end of the Monday or Wednesday, or both, I'd like to see this as an agenda item, then president, board officers can look, okay. We have a lot going this month, but we can probably get it scheduled here. That way, if it's something we discuss, then we can find time for it, like March's pretty full. I mean, I could sit here and I say, I want to talk about this, 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 in March, can we do it? Yeah, we could, but we don't want to have too much.
Yes, but I'm also thinking.
One, you have a, one side of the sword is.
I may want to get an agenda item on, and the, and the board votes, no, we don't want that agenda item, right? And, you know, the other side of the sword is. It prevents the president of the board from becoming the gatekeeper of the agenda. Because now, if we bring it up, and the, and the board says, yeah, we want to, we want to vote on, we would like to discuss this and vote on this. And the president of the board is against it, Rodney says, no way, I don't want to do that, then we would still be able to vote at the board and say. You know what, we'd really like to have this on the agenda, right? And, and so, see both sides? Even if you're trying to censor one person from, and not letting them get items on as a board, or it could be a way that the board could get. Items that the board's concerned about on the agenda. So.
And we would hope that it would be the second way, all the time.
We would hope, yes.
Yes. It's not to say that it would hinder someone from putting something on, it's just that we, when, this came out a lot of it from Nikki Whaley when she was here.
Right.
That that was one of the things that she said that you could do. And, um, it would make it seem more cohesive, boy, if we all agreed that that was an important item.
So.
So can I clarify?
I've been trying to ask this question for a while now. So, we have it right now in policy, that any board member, we can have something, we have to contact up to Dooley. Five days before the meeting goes out, to have something there. So if I, five, six days before the meeting, tell, I think we need to have this agenda item, we don't have time to vote to get together. Forty together to vote on it, so that actually won't be up here till then.
Eventually.
Yeah, but not.
But we don't have time to do it, like I said, at that meeting, and.
All you're doing is just a quick vote to agree with that agenda item.
Mm-hmm.
True.
That would take very much time.
It's going to have thirty days, unless you vote for a special session to vote on.
Exactly.
No, that's.
Well, you're asking a special meeting just to vote on what's going to be.
No, if someone brings up, say you've brought up a, a, uh, agenda item.
Mm-hmm.
And then the next thing is on there, and we already knows it's coming, so there would be something there, and each of us that agreed that this was an important item. And that's, and we could do this together, and I think it would get on the, um, on, on our schedule quicker, right? Because it's all of us together, it would agree.
Right, but whatever's our request agenda, I am easing that at the meeting.
I, I just, I want to say that we do do that, every time we, we, we approve the agenda at the start of the meeting, that's what we're doing. We're saying, we're okay with all these things, and if at any point, any one of us doesn't want to have any one of those discussions or votes. You, you can stay at the start.
It didn't work today.
Well, because we.
Because I have said that we would, when it, when it was tabled, that we'd have the discussion on it, on a discussion day. Instead, we're here at eight-thirty, I mean, it's.
But today was specifically, actually, we vote, it was brought up during the word, approve the agenda. And it was discussed about just tabling the vote, am I correct? And then we decided, once that item comes up, then we'll ask for tabling of the vote, but still continue with the discussion.
I don't think it should have been, because, but we, I did that before, so I'm not going to get into that, but.
Everybody else, as the, the board and the administration, everybody else was probably engaged in that discussion about that, so.
I think it should have been.
Sorry, can I point something out, so I had, I had made a motion to, to change that agenda item.
That we would depart them out.
Um, so I had that motion, and then we make, we came up with an agreement that we thought would work. You, you also could have done that, you could have said, I, I moved, I moved to indefinitely, um, postpone that agenda item. And then we could vote, we could vote that, and if we agree with you, then it would be indefinitely postponed. And if we disagreed, then we go ahead with it, so my point is, every single meeting, we do do this, we do do what you're asking for. And if anything that you don't want to talk about, you can, you can vote to postpone it, and you can move to postpone it, and if enough people agree with you, we will. And, and the one other thing I want to say is, Nikki Whaley did not suggest that we bring things forward like this. She suggested that we almost universally allow people to place their, their agenda items on the, on the thing, on the, um, on the agenda.
But Nikki's feeling.
But, but, but.
When it is agreed with the rest of the people.
Please, please let me finish.
What?
I, I thought that you tabled what you're saying right now, so that other people can have a chance to talk. Since I have a chance to say that I object to this.
Well, then, you know, in the voting one, you need to make a motion to table a suggestion.
Okay. Are you, what, are you making a motion?
I am.
Is there a second?
And I, just that, this is silly to be arguing about this right now, this is not a discussion period, this is an action period on one.
This is specifically a discussion item here, it's not even a vote for a, here, this is a discussion item, anyway, agenda is supposed to be. So it's not, so this is a decision by the, a decision by the board, I guess it could be a, a vote, it doesn't say a vote.
I know, majority discussion, I don't know, but we've always been hoping about having discussion on Wednesday, but I, because we always talk a little bit. There between my other thoughts and questions I ask.
But that was when we had no Monday night meetings.
This, Marsha, I understand what you're saying, but we've always said.
On Monday night, we decided to have it as a discussion.
We've discussed this last year, I can specifically remember, it's happened a couple of times. We will still discuss stuff on Wednesday if we need to, not just vote, because, you know, I may look at somebody who has a question about this, I'd like to ask and get something clarified. So I, I don't want it to look like we're trying to stifle discussion of any kind.
But reasonable.
Well, especially since.
Come on, reasonable.
People were not here for the discussion on this topic on Monday, so.
Now, now, and talking on this, just specific, I just need that thirty seconds, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The board is a trusted officer.
Mm-hmm.
And this is, to me, this is adding a step to when Rodney, and sometimes Rodney and myself, and the superintendent meet to discuss, talking about the agenda. I thought it was a pretty good deal last year, trying to keep stuff agendaized, like, okay, I can't get it now, we'll try and do it here, try to get it somewhere, but we have to be communicated. Do I think we need to have a board vote on every agenda request? No, I don't. I don't, because I think that's going to maybe prevent some discussion, prevent some agenda being brought up. Now, if that gets put on by the board president, he says, I would like to schedule this for here, someone, like they said, someone says, I'd like to table this. See, they get a second motion to vote then, but I'm not a fan of this, I don't like this. I don't think we need to have pre-approval of agenda, as we've spoken about later, and then vote again on it, or pass it, that's just me. I think myself, Rodney, the board officers, could say, hey.
But you were there when Nikki was here.
I understand it, but I still was, I still got what all was said.
Yeah.
I got.
She did say that a lot of the school districts are doing it. And so, if it's worth talking about, it doesn't mean it has to happen, but it's worth talking about.
That's why I started talking.
So that's exactly what I was trying, trying to say, so what Nikki Whaley suggested was that, what, what you're saying is, in general. Agenda requests will be added to the agenda as is, uh, that's how, if it works. Um, in cases, cases where the board president says, no, I don't, I don't, I don't approve of this, it's inappropriate. Or it's going to take too long, um.
Or it needs to be scheduled.
Or it's scheduled, in cases, in cases where the, uh, she specifically said where it would be, was being blocked. Not, not just like recently rescheduled, but where it was just a blanket, no.
No.
She's, she said that, um, the suggestion was that a person who's requesting it can then ask for this vote, the type of vote that Marsha's suggesting. I could say, okay, well, I request that we ask the board if they want to have this discussion. Um, that's what she suggested, not having it as a blanket thing for every item, just in those specific, uh, instances where the vote, where the, the item was being denied.
Yeah.
But, but I just want to clarify, that's, that's what she was saying.
Oh, yes, dear.
Okay, I guess because, and it is worded, we could have voted on, I mean, it's all, this is a decision made by the board, so do we have a motion?
No, then we haven't even voted on it, I mean, it's not that you can.
Okay, I wasn't sure, because the way it's, the way it's written, it's a decision.
As long as I get to vote.
It's one of those, since it's not a.
I thought this was an, it said, this is an informational, the, item.
Then it says, this is a decision by the board.
It says approval, which is probably allowed, um, but I think, Marsha, if you don't want to go out, you would request it, so you probably could re-trust it.
The recommendation is just that, the recommendation, so, I mean, it's up to the board whether you have tabled the vote, you don't have to vote on it. You could just say that we agree not to vote, or you can vote no, or you can vote yep, it's up to the board. The recommendation, the superintendent, it's just a recommendation.
So this is a decision by the board?
Thank you.
So, is there a vote on it, or not?
Yeah, I don't know, if no one makes a motion, then it was kind of solved. I thought it was just to, we were just going to.
That's what I originally thought too, and then when I saw the, the voting grid down below.
If it's a discussion of it, then, then the majority of the board wants it, I can vote on it, take, what, because I'm fair, and I'm going to vote.
Okay.
We know that.
Well, and it seems like we, we don't have somebody making the motion anyway, so I'm going to say, there are discussions, I'm going to now figure that out.
Yeah, figure it out, yeah. That wasn't too hard.
For what?
Wait, just a.
That's the agenda item, to add an agenda item, if there are more things.
The agenda item, to add agenda items, the board request to add agenda items to future meetings, so that's asking for.
Right, that's all we've been there.
Okay, no, I just, I, so does anybody have a request for a future agenda?
Oh, I. Oh, actually, I do, um, I do, um, the screen said it was an executive session.
Okay.
Wait, can we get that?
Do you wanna add it for March, or do you want us to do it?
I, I don't know.
I hope you don't have it for March, because I'm putting that off for a very long, but I'm also, I mean, that might be one where, we send out an email and see what day, sun is, and work for the majority of the board, if we can set a date and find out if we're not gonna perform.
Yeah, I'll just send you an email, just pick a day and I'll pray that it can be.
Okay.
But I don't think you'll be.
Okay.
So, probably we should, I, I.
I would like to.
I'm pretty.
That much, it's pretty, uh.
Yeah. Yeah. That's pretty necessary.
You wanna via send an email, or? Who's sending the email?
I think that was, um.
If you send it out, then we can all just respond to you individually, of what our time, of what availability.
Yeah, if you don't mind doing that, that would be good.
You know his schedule, well, he does. You bet.
Are there any other proposals?
I requested, it's probably one where, I requested the discussion about the candidate search, um, and it was denied. And I, I think, but I don't know, that there may have been a misunderstanding about what I was wanting to discuss. The whole purpose of the, um, request was to discuss ways to get the word out on the, um, the superintendent posting, to our Oho community, and by that, I don't just mean people that live in Oho, I mean, the, the families that have moved away from Oho, um, and their friends, all of the people that are part of the extended Oho community, I feel like that's a gap. We have postings, um, like on national job boards, which is great, um, but our, our, um, our consultant can't be expected to know, um, how to get the word, who to get the word out to, um, regarding more local, um, communication. So, that's, that's the discussion I have, I wanted to have, is, um, will you do anything to get the word out better, we can let no Oho? And if so, how, how do we go about?
Are you gonna talk about searching for candidates?
So, so we can't, can't really.
We can't do that, we have a contractual agreement with them, but are you, or are you talking about like the, let's be cool, like getting your name on the survey?
He's done it a lot, so I think he has ways of knowing how to get a hold of the community, and especially where he works with mostly, um, smaller communities, rather than the people central.
He worked TSDs on large community surveys.
Wait, wait, order, see, this is what the discussion would be if we were to have it, but we can't have it because it's been denied. So, I am asking for that discussion, discuss how to get the word out, um, to the greater Oho community. And, um, like literally, how, how, how that works, like we send a list of, of, um, uh, I don't know, local organizations that we hope to share the information with, um, to the consultant, so he can then distribute it. Those would be the kind of question I, I would ask, so, I just wanna say, I, I, I'm asking for it again, but because I feel like maybe there was a misunderstanding there.
Can we table that?
You can't table, I mean, it's on the agenda.
Oh, really? Because I think you'd be stepping on his.
Yes.
So, I, that's what, I, we, that's what the type of thing that we were discussing, that we can say, will you table it?
But at the time when she's making the agenda request, wasn't the time to table it, the time to table it is when it actually comes out on the agenda, it should be discussed.
Because we can't table something that's not an agenda.
So, as you're proposing, yes, you have to contact Dr. Coolax for, for anything other than the survey.
Yes.
This is, folks, I'm really, I'm part of the reason, it's, I'm part of the reason it's gone on the agenda. You're really, really treading on thin ice, it's really borderline micromanaging. He has a contract, I talked to him, and I don't have a dog in this fight, but the district just signed the contract. And we are bordering on, he's not, you can do what you wanna do, but ASBA is not even gonna support it or pay for it. So, you gotta be very careful, I don't want, I don't want, I don't want ASBA to think this board is micromanaging us, not without giving you a search, folks, at all.
I get that, but I think we're also getting close to a meeting of our. This is simply her making an agenda request, and now it's become a discussion of what we should request.
We'll just leave it, as you requested this, it's all noted by the, sorry, by the president.
Okay, and having no further questions from the board, we have a motion to adjourn.
I, I have a second.